Good evening, this is City Council. Special meeting Tuesday, September 10th. Could we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Bierman. Councilmember Hoffner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamlington.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Our first, since we're in council chambers, I'm going to use my point of personal privilege to ask for a pledge of allegiance.
United States of America, the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thanks, alright. Mix it up a little bit. A little patriotism here. There's one other point of privilege. That I just want to exercise here, which is that some in our community have raised a question about. Some were a group that was in the parade that held signs that folks thought were highly offensive. I wanted to address this just briefly. First, that group was not properly in the parade because they hadn't signed up. They apparently jumped in the parade in the middle. Say violated our rules. In doing that, we have what we call time, place, and manner rules that we follow and people. Everybody needs to follow them if they want to participate in the parade. Second. It's important for people to know that what was on the signs in the parade that these folks were holding do not represent the views of the city. They don't represent the views of any specific council member, and they certainly don't represent the views of the council as a whole. And that's all important. We have a, all the respect for First Amendment. It's a fundamental value in this democratic society, and it's a big election season, and these are not. And it's important to follow the law and recognize that perhaps some of this wasn't as it seemed. But in any event, I want folks to know that. Okay. Let's go to the regular agenda, which is first, minimum wage, economic analysis results, discussion, and direction. Do we have staff presentation?
We do, thank you, Mayor. So we're just bringing this up now. I'm City Manager Fox, and I will get us started here, and then we'll hand this over to our consultants from Echo Northwest. So first, I want to welcome you. If you can go to the next slide. We had some enabling legislation here back in 2010 that allowed us to do regional minimum wages. The moral of the story is we have the capacity to do this, and there's some benefit to doing this regionally from this enabling legislation. And if you go to the next slide, that's the approach we've been taking here. So I know this originally came up at Consortium of Cities. In 2023, council had a presentation on minimum wage. In December of that same year, council elected to participate in IGA with five other municipalities, or five total municipalities, to begin work on economic analysis and community engagement of this. We broke those into two parts. My presentation tonight will cover a little bit of the overview of the background and the engagement component. And then the next piece will cover the economic analysis portion, which will be from our technical experts. So do you want to highlight the Consortium of Cities is a body of elected officials from the region who work on regional issues like this and brought up regional minimum wage in 2023, and I believe also in as early as 2020, I started talking about it. So this work for us, once we agreed to be part of the group who came through, consisted of economic analysis done by an independent contractor via an IGA. We had a staff person participate in RFP process for that competitively selected Echo Northwest, who did analysis on what the impacts of an increase in regional minimum wage would look like, not only with the region, but with Louisville specifically, and you'll hear more detail on that tonight. Then we also, as community members, or as staff members, collaborated with each community on an engagement approach. I really want to highlight, this was a no small lift done in-house by these communities and coordinated among five municipalities to be consistent with our questions and approaches, to be diverse in the audiences we reached, and to try and get as many different focus groups and target areas as possible. It's pretty impressive to see five communities work together. Just want to highlight Grace and Derek on our communications team, who are our lead staff in that. And go to the next slide. We have more partners than just the five municipalities. This slide shows a small spectrum. There were a lot of people engaging in this work, guiding some of the questions around what scoping should be, making sure we were thinking of all of these considerations, so chambers of commerce. We reached out to an even broader scope through our economic analysis. Want to go to the next slide? A highlight of where we are in exploring regional minimum wage. So I know this map looks a little small, but the sort of yellow tan area is unincorporated Boulder County, which does have a regional minimum wage right now, and I know we have Commissioner Stolzmann here tonight as well from Boulder County. Right now, the wage, the minimum wage in Boulder County is 1569, and that's increasing via escalator till we get to 25 in 2030 is the current target. The blue are the municipalities participating. We are doing the study, considering if we want to move together on a regional minimum wage. The orange there is in Denver area, which has some additional regional minimum wages as well. So there is some precedent for this in the region as we think about where we're going tonight. Go to the next slide. Thank you. Three of the five municipalities have already had conversations about this. Boulder has directed staff to bring back an ordinance. They are looking at considering an 8% increase each of three years to target, I believe, 15.57 in 2025. I believe their next meeting on this is October 10th, so they're still in the process of considering this. Longmont has met and did not provide additional staff direction. Lafayette provided staff additional direction to provide more engage, or more feedback on engagement and some of the analysis with residents and businesses. Erie's presentation is the 17th, and I know our other communities will be watching us tonight to see where Louisville goes in this conversation. So a little bit more about the engagement. We hosted a spectrum of in-person and virtual events across the areas of the five municipalities. Louisville in particular took the opportunity to partner with Lafayette, who both are on the South Side and share a lot of area. Go to the next slide. We had a questionnaire with a total of 933 responses. If you take out the Louisville-specific responses, there were about 91. We had 37 residents, 50 businesses, and four who took the Spanish version. All of our engagement for this was intended to be provided to a diverse audience, and that means language diversity as well. By the numbers, Louisville and Lafayette held two focus groups. We also advertised the focus groups, including a virtual focus group, that the rest of the municipalities held, so that we could get a broad spectrum and encouraged anyone to attend any focus group. Our specific focus groups in Louisville, Lafayette, one was targeted to residents, one was targeted to businesses. We had a total of 39 participants at those, really robust conversations via tabletop at each of those events. We heard a lot of key themes out of this. There's themes about quality of life and community sustainability, employee attraction and retention, local economy and inflation, and how this might impact. There could be disproportionate impacts to small business. There were some questions about the purpose of minimum wage, and there was diversity of opinion of the purpose of changing a regional minimum wage. There were questions of local government's role in policy development, and there were a lot of highlights of potential sector-specific impacts. This is a complex issue. We all know this, and that's why we have a technical expert helping to present some of that data today. Want to go to the next slide? With that, I would like to present, I believe, Dr. Andrew Dye, who's a senior economist with Echo Northwest, and is going to take over the presentation from here. Looks like you're still muted, Andrew.
Sorry about that. Thank you. So thank you, Council and Mayor, for inviting me to speak here. I'm, you know, very interested in helping to explain our report and our analysis. As you're probably well aware, the report has a lot of information in it, far more than we can cover today, so I will present some highlights. And need to pause to find out if I should be sharing my screen, or if you wanted to continue with the slides. I do have them ready to share.
Yeah, if you could share, that would be great.
Okay, and is everyone able to see the slides?
Yes, we can.
Great. So feel free to pause me, sorry, interrupt me with questions in between. They will be available after the presentation to answer questions as well, and happy to do so. So first, just wanted to give a quick overview of what we did in our analysis, and there are really three main components. One was what we were calling an existing conditions analysis, and I'll give you a few highlights from that, and that was really a look at both broad and deep at a large number of indicators, from high-level economic indicators like regional GDP, unemployment rates, to very specific sort of detailed demographic analysis of the households most likely to both benefit and be vulnerable to the potential costs of increased minimum wage, and I'll give you an example of that in a little bit here. We also conducted a comparative analysis where we looked at a number of the municipalities, cities, and counties across the country that have relatively recently increased their minimum wage substantially, and not just at those municipalities themselves, but also at some of the economic data both before and after they increased their minimum wage to try to get a global sense of what might be happening in this region if it were to proceed with a substantial minimum wage increase. We also reviewed literature regarding those rigorous academic literature regarding some of those cities, and present some of those findings in the report as well. Finally, really the meat of the analysis was a regional impact analysis, and that's where we brought to bear a lot of the data sources we reviewed in existing conditions analysis, a lot of the literature reviewed for the comparative analysis, and built a model of the regional impacts along a large number of dimensions of a minimum wage increase. We'll spend a fair amount of time there. Important to recognize that the analysis is not sort of pinpoint-specific. It's very good, I think, for providing order of magnitude information about the impacts of minimum wage increase. You know, if, what are the impacts if the region proceeds with a very rapid and minimum wage increase to a high level? How does that compare to relatively slow increases over a longer period of time? But it's not, it does not have the ability, the data would not support sort of splitting the hairs of what if we increase by 25 cents next year versus 50 cents? It's an order of magnitude. It's also limited in important ways by the available data and research, and for that reason, it does not and cannot ask all possible questions. And I do want to say that the process pursued by the Consortium of Municipalities wisely pursued both this quantitative analysis as well as the engagement, because that engagement not only provides opinions, but can help fill in some of the gaps left by the available data and research. So first piece here, again, just some highlights from the existing conditions and comparative analysis, and I will start with a pretty high-level demographic picture. What you're looking at here is the distribution of race and ethnicity for the five municipalities. Probably nothing that's terribly surprising to anybody at this meeting. You can see Erie and Louisville with about 1 in 5 residents either identifying as Hispanic or non-Hispanic BIPOC, less diverse than some of the other municipalities, but nonetheless, that's 1 in 5 residents, so substantial portion of the population. And I also show this to note that throughout our analysis and our review of the data, we disaggregated wherever possible by race and ethnicity and other dimensions of the data to really understand to the best of our ability the characteristics and the number of people and businesses most likely to be affected by a minimum wage increase. And it'll show you in the next slide here. We know that race and ethnicity is highly correlated with individuals' exposure to the minimum wage increase. On the left, and this is regional data, we don't have this information specific for individual municipalities, but that left chart shows the race and ethnicity, racial and ethnic distribution of all workers on the top, workers in low-wage occupations, I think childcare workers, restaurant servers, things of that nature, and also in low-wage industries. And this latter two, and so there, I think again, retail, childcare, restaurants, accommodations, these kinds of industries. And those latter two groups are quite clearly more exposed to the potential costs and benefits of increasing the minimum wage. And what you can see from the chart is while there are not enormous disparities in representation, we can see pretty clearly that Hispanic individuals in particular are overrepresented in low-wage occupations and in low-wage industries relative to all workers. And these sort of job and industry of employment translate into, and the wages earned translate into higher or lower household income, quite clearly. And so on the right, what we're showing is median household income by race and ethnicity, both for the five municipalities combined on the bottom and for Louisville on the top. We see some pretty common disparities, although you will note that the pattern's a little bit different, where we have Hispanic-headed households with about 5% lower median household income than white-headed households, non-Hispanic BIPOC-headed households with incomes that are about 20% lower at the median. So again, different pattern from the region, but still large and meaningful by most measures. So again, focusing both on business employees and businesses, this slide focuses on business size. There's more information on industry and other characteristics of the business communities in the region and the municipalities, but I want to focus on small business, this in particular as a sector that is often very vocal about, sometimes support for, often opposition to minimum wage increases, and that plausibly has a claim to being more vulnerable and more exposed to the costs and benefits, and often, oftentimes, the cost of a minimum wage increase. We address that more a little bit later in the presentation, but just want to give the lay of the land with this slide. On the left, we show the employment by employee side, or sorry, employer size. And as you can see, Louisville on the right there has the smallest share of small businesses, if we define those as businesses with fewer than 25 individuals. But nonetheless, almost a quarter of employment, a quarter of workers are employed in the smaller businesses. On the right side, we show the relative importance of small business employment in low-wage industries and all other industries. And here, Louisville appears as a bit of an outlier. Almost half of employment in low-wage industries is accounted for by small businesses, although I will say that Louisville has a slightly smaller share of low-wage, of businesses and employment in low-wage industries. Switching back to workers and more of a demographic analysis, drilling down specifically on minimum wage workers. Fourth, noting that we cannot precisely identify workers that are definitely earning a minimum wage or not. It's just not possible to count, so we have an approximation. And with that approximation, we can look at the characteristics of those workers. And what this chart shows is for a given demographic, say, workers who are less than 18, the share of those workers that are earning a minimum wage as best as we can tell. And I'd say the most striking piece of this chart is that age distribution here, there, where workers under 20, 24 and under are much, much more likely to have a minimum wage job than older workers by multiples. And those workers under 18 are a fairly small share of the labor force, about 1% of all workers, 7% of all minimum wage workers. 18 to 24-year-olds account for a somewhat larger share of all workers, about 10%. But together, those two groups account, comprise just over half of all minimum wage workers. So again, groups likely to be affected directly for better or worse by minimum wage increase. Again, disparities by race and ethnicity with Hispanic and other BIPOC individuals more likely to have minimum wage job than white individuals. Female workers more likely to have minimum wage job than male workers, less educated individuals, similar story there. Then finally, one more piece here. We looked at commuting patterns to help think about who is likely to benefit or experience the cost of a minimum wage. And what we're looking at here is the commute patterns of low-income workers by, for each municipality. The big takeaway is that across the region, and this is not atypical, workers are much more like, or somewhat more likely to work outside of the place where they live. We look at Louisville on the right. The orange bar shows the share of workers who live in a community that also work in that community. In the case of Louisville, 16%, a little more than 1 in 8. If we include, look at all workers who work in one of the five municipalities in the consortium, we had 23%. So you get to about 40% of all workers, but a majority of workers who live in Louisville work outside of this consortium. And we don't have the data for it, but a similar kind of story would hold for business owners, where many of the businesses in Louisville are owned by business owners outside of the municipality, and business owners in Louisville may own businesses in other places. So again, important to recognize that dynamic and thinking about an approach. And I'd say one of the reasons why a region-wide approach makes some amount of sense. Okay, so final piece here with the existing conditions piece was our comparative analysis. There's a database maintained by a center at the University of Berkeley that tracks municipal local minimum wage increases. There are, to date, about 70 in the country. We didn't look in depth at all of them. We tried to focus down on a handful 10 in particular, that, for which we could collect enough data to look at conditions before and after, after the minimum wage increase. We also looked at the literature on some of those cities, as well as brought more broadly literature on minimum wage increases generally. And the conclusions that we draw from all of that information is that it's important to note that localities that do have instituted a higher minimum wage differ in important ways from localities that have not. And that's important for thinking about, well, how do we know if we're doing well? You don't get a good answer there if you just look at, say, a particular city and compare that city to all other cities who have not raised the minimum wage, because there are fundamental differences. And some of that leads to the fact that localities do seem to be able to generally tailor policy, the minimum wage increases to local conditions, such that we generally don't see major economic disruption. On net, there are benefits, there are some costs. We don't see large disruptions in aggregate when we look at the data and the literature. And then the more rigorous literature, again, also suggests in some cases, negative employment impacts, that is, employment seems to go down as a result of the minimum wage increase. But by and large, those are, more recently, estimates have been that those effects are very small. Some studies find no statistically significant effects on employment and some other potentially negative outcomes. Again, much more information in the report and happy to take questions on this piece. Okay, so now to get to the meat of the analysis, again, the existing conditions, we really wanted to lay the, give a lay of the land, set up the context for thinking about the impact analysis. First thing I'm going to do is show you the framework we used as we were developing our model, and this was inspired by some work, again, from out of the University of Berkeley, California, that really illustrates an economist's view of how a minimum wage increase affects the economy. And there are both negative, potentially negative consequences in the red boxes and some potentially positive outcomes in the green boxes. And it's important to know that in the early days of minimum wage research, the focus was really on those red boxes. Cost increase for employers, they have to raise prices and/or lay off workers and/or close. It's only really the last couple of decades that researchers have started to recognize the full picture of what's likely to happen as a result of the minimum wage increase. Obviously, if employers are paying higher wages, workers are earning more money. This allows them to spend more money, which can be circulated throughout the economy, potentially leading to job increases. And so it's an important empirical question to say, what is the net effect of that minimum wage increase on jobs? Also want to call out this blue box in the middle. Employers have means other than simply raising wages or laying off workers to accommodate a minimum wage increase. And we do see this in the literature and in the world. An option is to increase automation, and what that does essentially is increase the productivity of workers. And what is the net impact of that on jobs? Again, that's an empirical question, but there are ways to modify working conditions and processes. Next couple of slides here illustrate the scenarios we fed into our model, so we took that framework. We looked at the academic literature on the impacts of minimum wage and built a model that would calculate quantitative impacts in many cases for specific scenarios. And those scenarios were designed around current law in Colorado, Denver, in unincorporated Boulder County. And these scenarios were not designed to be prescriptive. They are not the only options available. As you already heard, Longmont has chosen something that's not quite any of these scenarios, and other municipalities haven't chosen what to do yet. But do want to describe what we put into the model. So right now, this shows the current law, the gray bar, or the gray line is Colorado current law, where the minimum wage increases with inflation each year. For this analysis, we assumed a simple 3% inflation per year. That assumption does not drive the nature of the results, although it would change the numbers if we were to change that. Denver has a higher minimum wage now, but they are also, at this point, increasing the minimum with inflation, so that's that orange line, increasing at about 3.3% per year. And then finally, unincorporated Boulder, as you heard, is increasing their minimum wage more quickly to $25 by 2030, and then increasing with inflation thereafter. Also shown on this chart, and the next couple of charts, is the self-sufficiency wage, which we can talk more about if people aren't familiar with it, but the idea is to calculate the wage necessary for a full-time worker to be able to be economically self-sufficient and not rely on other supports. That's not, we're not recommending that as a target, but it is a benchmark for assessing how how close to that self-sufficiency wage a full-time minimum wage worker could work, could get under different scenarios. Then to the specific scenarios, one of them was our, what we call our baseline, that's Colorado law. That's what the minimum wage will do if Louisville decides not to do anything with respect to minimum wage. And then on top of that, we created four scenarios. Two around the unincorporated Boulder trajectory, that's shown on the left. Two around the Denver current law, shown on the right in orange. And there are two flavors for each of those. One, the idea was to increase, the scenario increases as rapidly as allowed by state law, which is the maximum of 15% increase per year until reaching the target trajectory. So you can see on the left for unincorporated Boulder County, there's one year of 15% increase, and then the trajectory just sort of follows unincorporated Boulder County. Similar story for Denver. The slower version of each scenario simply seeks to reach the target trajectory by 2035, so a slower ramp up over 10 years. So we have a slow and a fast version of unincorporated Boulder, which overall is more aggressive, and the slow and the fast version of the Denver scenario. Okay, so next few slides, and I'm going to show some numbers, and then we also compiled all of the results, some, many of the quantitative results and qualitative results into a visual that allows a sort of high-level understanding of the patterns of positive and negative effects of minimum wage as predicted by the model over time. I'll say this one more time, because it's very important when we get to the slide. But it's important to recognize that it's not appropriate to score a scenario based on the number of what you'll see are red and green, red and green squares. An increase in earnings is not the same kind of thing as a reduction in poverty, as an increase in payroll costs paid by employers, as a change in fiscal revenue. We use the colors, again, to help, help the viewer understand the general patterns of impacts across the scenarios. So a few key findings, again, many more. So a few key findings, uh again, many more in the report, um, first slide here is on employment and earnings, um, we have two metrics, and I'll talk you through both of these. Top panel shows the net employment effect that we expect based on each of the trajectories. B one and B two are the fast unincorporated Boulder County and slow unincorporated Boulder County scenarios respectively. Similar interpretation for D one and D two. Um, overall, we would predict some job losses, although, as I'll explain, not large job losses, you can see that. We expect larger effects on those teenagers and young adults, again, they comprise a large share, a majority of all minimum wage workers. And for other reasons, maybe more sensitive to the effects of the minimum wage, um. On net, if we calculate those job losses as a share of current employment. As of twenty thirty, we would expect employment to be about one percent lower than it would be otherwise. Employment will still keep going up, just slightly slower. For context, that works out to be about point two percent growth per year, we spread that out over twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty. Historical employment growth has been about ten times that over the last fifteen, ten, fifteen years. So it's not nothing, you wouldn't ask for a job decline all else equal, but it's relatively small compared to what we see um is typical increases from one year to the next. On the more positive side, the bottom panel shows you the number of workers uh the model predicts would experience increased earnings in a given week. Relative to the baseline, uh so remember, under any scenario, Colorado's statement minimum wage is going to be increasing. Um, these range in uh from about a percentage point for the least aggressive Denver scenario to about eight percent of workers. Uh, in the most aggressive bold, unincorporated Boulder County scenario, the impacts are somewhat larger if you look out to twenty thirty-five, again, those are the the results. Um, important to note that those increased earnings are relative to baseline. And um background wage increases, which we would expect even in the absence of a minimum wage increase. And so those um changes, both unemployment slightly increased uh or slightly reduced employment. And increases in earnings translate into on net um a reduction in income inequality, um, supported by the literature. And an increase in resources for uh lower-income households. And so what this uh chart shows, we weren't able to do this at the municipality level, but for the region. Um, this shows you for each scenario, how much the change in um average family income at each uh income bracket defined. Relative to the federal poverty level. So you can see the largest gains for families uh with. Incomes below the federal poverty level, less than a hundred percent. Um, and increases for all ranges up to about three times the federal poverty level. And then smaller, proportionally very small declines for households with uh earning five hundred per time, five times or more the federal poverty level. Um, and so while these may look small in a relative sense, it's important to recognize, as you can see in the report. That not every household below a hundred percent of the federal poverty level has a minimum wage worker. So all of the benefits here and some of the, and the costs are are focused on a subset of households for the most part and. What looks, may look like in some cases, small numbers are um more significant or specific households. Um, in terms of the negative numbers at the top, those are driven largely by uh changes, reductions in income of business owners who are. Paying higher wages without necessarily increasing prices, although some of the job losses uh might accrue in that, in that. Um, sort of tranche of households as well. Finally, uh last, last slide with numbers here, um. We looked at a number of more macro characteristics, um, in particular, um. Price level and GDP. The table on the left shows the predicted change in price levels. By twenty thirty, we would expect very slightly higher prices regionally as a result of a a increase in the minimum wage. Um, but by less than point one percent um in in all cases, so like other measures. Prices will continue to go up, no one's figured out a cure for inflation, if that's even desirable. Um, but prices would be slightly higher by by twenty thirty, again, for context. Um, inflation has tend tended to grow um. By multiples of that per every year, um. Similarly, we would expect um. A small, very small decline in GDP by twenty thirty-five, by twenty thirty, it's almost a wash according to the model. Uh, very slightly lower GDP in twenty thirty-five as a result of the trajectories. Um, but for context, important to recognize that, again, historically, GDP has grown in recent years by. Four percent a year or more, so multiples of the the. Small decline we would expect cumulatively by twenty thirty-five. Then finally, and I think importantly, um, the model predicts negligible changes in local tax revenue. And we're not able with the available data and uh research to parse out, say, sales tax from other revenue streams, but on net. A posit- a a very, very small reduction, um, fractions of a dollar per person in in local tax revenue. We would expect uh much more significant and substantial effects result on expenditures as. Municipalities, as Louisville has to pay its lowest-paid workers a higher wage. Um, so we think that dynamic is fairly important. Last piece here is just the visual I tried to describe. Um, a ra- a raid along the left side, we have all the impacts we looked at, um, some of which I already showed you. Uh, some of which we were only able to make a qualitative assessment, um, and those are all laid out in detail in the report. Um, but impacts to workers, impacts to businesses. Those regional impacts, and then finally, the impacts to governments on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. As you read down a column, um, you're looking at uh green positive impact, red negative impact, yellow neutral or zero. Um, impact as we read across. You're looking at the order of magnitude of the impact relative to other scenarios and other years, again, it's not appropriate to compare across. Rows, because changes in our work, hours worked are not the same as changes in prices, et cetera, so not directly comparable. Um, and I think the the big conclusion is that perhaps not surprisingly, we do see. Larger impacts for the more aggressive scenarios, larger impacts cumulatively at later dates. Um, but also regardless of scenario, a mix of positive and negative, um. All of which leads us to our conclusions and recommendations, and that mix of positive and negative. If impacts combined with what we see in the literature and comparative analysis is that. Really increasing the minimum wage can be an effective way to improve outcomes for low-wage workers, and there's a large body of literature that we summarized, some of which we've talked about today. Um, it's also apparent that municipalities, states also, but municipalities in particular. Can increase the minimum wage without causing great economic harm. But there are trade-offs, and some of those trade-offs are hidden behind those aggregate effects, because while. We predict a relatively, a very small, I'd say, impact on employment overall. There will be some larger reductions, uh some industries will be hit a little bit harder. Um, but others will benefit, again, as some workers earn more income and go out and spend their money. And in some cases, they will be spending their money on those affected industries, um, and so it's important to recognize the dynamics and and sort of. To the extent possible, under understand those. And putting that together, uh, we did come up with a three-part recommendation, um, and I will again say the scenarios were not developed to be pres- prescriptive. So what we would say is that, um, if Louisville decides it makes sense to pursue a minimum wage increase in collaboration with other cities or not. We would recommend a scenario similar to B two. Where the minimum wage reaches that of unincorporated Boulder by twenty thirty-five. That would be about twenty-nine dollars after accounting for inflation, in today's terms, it's closer to twenty-one dollars, um. We do consider inflation. Two features of that scenario that we like, one is a slow ramp up. Um, that allows our our second part of a recommendation to make a lot of sense. Um, as well as ultimately achieves consistency across the county, and while we wouldn't say consistency with unincorporated Boulder County is the gold standard. Consistency to the extent possible across jurisdictions is useful because it provides certainty for businesses or employees. Um, and helps with uh compliance as well as monitoring of 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 conditions. Second, and I think very important part of a recommendation is to conduct a mid-cycle evaluation in twenty thirty or thereabouts, could be a little bit earlier. But definitely should be. Um, not done in earnest for a few years to allow the economy to react and adjust in in important ways to the minimum wage increase. Um, that's why we like the slower ramp-up period, because it allows um that kind of mid-cycle evaluation before getting too deep into a a rapid. Minimum wage increase. Um, but I would say also, look at what's happening in unincorporated Boulder County, look at what's happening in the the rest of the the country. Um, and that will allow for mid-course corrections if needed, whether that's to stay the course, to slow down, to accelerate, um. Finally, third part of the recommendation is that after reaching the target wage, whatever it is, um, to index that wage to a regional, well, the Denver Regional Consumer Price Index. Um, it's, we think it's very important as economists and um in through experience to index the minimum wage, um, if a minimum wage is deemed important. Um, it only makes sense to increase that with some measure of the cost of living, um. Most municipalities who increase minimum wage use a regional price index, a handful use a national price index. Uh, very small number also have sort of safety valve relief measures where if. Certain economic conditions like unemployment or inflation exceed bounds, then minimum wages are paused. Or stopped, um, and those are, of course, on the table. And with that, I will um open it up to questions.
Thank you very much, appreciate, that was a lot of information in the short, pretty time, and a really good uh slide deck. For us, I'm sure we're going to have some questions, uh I do, but why don't we uh. Start to with the mayor pretend. Do you have any questions? Pardon me? Oh, Dietrich has his hand up, right, well. I didn't mean to catch you off guard there, uh, uh, council member Heffner.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for the presentation, um. Just a handful of questions, first, you you spoke to our regional data, can you tell us what what the region is?
Yeah, and there's, there's more detail in the um i- in the report, but there's a a couple of different regions, in some cases, we can identify data for. Louisville and for Erie and for Longmont, et cetera, and in a few ca- places, we've aggregated those, uh, a couple of the slides had that. In in other cases, the data just don't allow us to, for example, identify the race and ethnicity of low-wage workers, and we need to look at a broader area. Uh, and there's a map in the report, I don't have it um on the, on these slides, it's a, there's a census-defined area, um, the one we selected in consultation with. Um, representatives from all the five municipalities. That includes, um. I I believe all of Louisville, um, I'm going to talk to Erie next week, and we'll have to tell them it excludes half of it, but we tried to pick a geography. That and contained a population that resembled what we see in the five municipalities, um, so there were some other options that included. All of Erie, but a lot of Weld County, and the rest of Weld County looks very different demographically and economically from the five municipalities. And so when we say regional data, that's primarily from that census geography that is not specific to the five municipalities, but it's the best approximation.
Very helpful, thanks, um. Then on on slide eighteen, you spoke to low-wage industries. It, is that coincident with minimum wage jobs, or is that a a different definition?
Uh, it's slightly different, um, it's going to overlap, um, because we don't have perfect, but because we don't have perfect data, it's um. Industries that on average pay wages that are about the twenty-fifth percentile of the wage distribution. So they're, they rely more heavily on lower-wage workers than than other industries, again, you can. Retail, uh accommodations and food industry, um, childcare, things of that, true.
Do you, do you have a number for that twenty-fifth percentile cutoff? Um, I, I'm not going to hold you to it.
Yeah, I. I I don't, I, we probably have it in the report, and I do have it, I I don't have it at my finger, so I hate that misspeaking.
Um, and then just.
It is, it is higher than the minimum wage.
Oh, like a little, like twenty dollars an hour, thirty, I mean.
Yeah, a bit twenty to thirty somewhere, probably twenty, twenty to twenty-five there, I've, I've put myself out there.
Um, and then my last question is, I think on one of your slides. You forecast, you know, maybe in on the order of magnitude of one percent job losses, is that right?
Uh, well, specifically, the job or employment will be one percent lower than it would be otherwise.
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
It, and I I think you also said that the under twenty-five percentage of employment is also about one percent?
Well, the under eighteen is one percent of all workers, yeah.
A- and do you think, do you, what do you think the Venn diagram is there between the one percent that's under eighteen? And the one percent of jobs that go away?
Um, more concentrated, um, I I think, you know, you're not going to see all teenagers lose their jobs, clearly, um. And the slide I have, and I can bring these up back up if it would be helpful, but you you we showed the um. Younger workers combining eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds um as experiencing a disproportionate, the majority really of all the job losses, so. Um, proportionally would be some much higher than one percent job losses for that population.
Got it, um, and then, uh, sorry, this is really my last question, uh. You know, I think you spoke a little bit to the sort of. It it's going to impact some industries more than others, can you just go over that again? And which industries will be impacted?
Yeah, and so, for example, we have, um. Uh, we don't have e- employment losses by industry, because that's, this is not something we have data or research to support, but there is some industry-specific information. Um, one that will jump out is changes in payroll costs, um, and not surprisingly, some of those low-wage industries, we would expect to experience. Much higher increases in payroll costs than o- other employers, so your. You know, your professional services, um, my firm will will not, would not experience a big effect, because we don't have very many minimum wage workers, if any. But your restaurants will see a much larger proportionate increase in operating cost, payroll costs. Than than other industries.
Restaurants, hotels, I mean, what are we talking about?
Exactly, yeah, I mean, same things I've I've been uh mentioning, so restaurants, hotels, childcare is an important one, I think it's come up in in multiple conversations, retail. Um, agriculture at some extent.
Okay. Thanks a lot, that that, those are very helpful answers, I appreciate it.
Yep, and so I, just one quick follow-up too, and in terms of most affected does not mean necessarily. You know, massive business failures, that as we say in the report, we did, we, there will be some business failures as a result of the minimum wage. It's hard to pinpoint exactly which failures are due to what, um, but other businesses will emerge, um, and on net. Um, we we don't expect big disruptions, although for, you know, the affected business. On an individual level, it's obviously tragic.
Thanks a lot.
Questions from council members, yes, member time.
Um. Just curious if you. Hope this is the, I asked the right person, but um. If you have a sense of why the the tipped wage credit is um designed to be the same. You know, and so relatively, it becomes less and less and less of a credit over time. Obviously, if we were to fast forward to a hundred dollars an hour, if it was still a three-dollar credit, it it isn't a difference. Uh, what's, what's the rationale from your perspective of of not adjusting that over time a- as well?
Yeah, I I think, um. I I I don't know the legislative history of the the tip credit, uh particularly in Colorado, um. I would not be surprised if it was, um. If it was just because it was just not indexed, a lot of things that. As economists, we think should be indexed over time, and there's often debate about tax brackets and so on, and some things are increasingly indexed, but if it was maybe just a legacy of. Not paying attention to indexing, um, I I don't know that to be the case. But but there has been some conversation, I can get in the Boulder Council meeting about some of the implications of that, um. Really, um, reduction in importance of the tip credit, um.
Yeah, because I was just trying to understand, and you you didn't bring it up in your presentation, it's in in our packet in a lot of different spots, but. Just trying to understand the the impact of that, you know, i- in particular. Among, you know, a lot of these businesses that are paying minimum wage are, you know, obviously relying on the tips um to bring those wages up. And so, you know, it's, they're so unique relative to the rest of the world, uh where, you know, um, none of my employees also get tipped. Um, so just it's a, you know, sort of uncontrolled and yet expected part of it. And so I just couldn't quite understand with all of the, your analysis of kind of the. Impact that it has specifically on those industries that. Have a, you know, a large amount of tipped employees, and if they are disproportionately affected. So I just, I was kind of missing that, you know, understanding that through your pre- presentation, if there was, you know, any, any evidence to what that, you know, the. Disproportionate impact it has.
Right, yeah, I mean, no, no direct evidence, certainly, and um. Tip credits exist in various places, they're not uniform, so I I'm in Oregon right now, we do not have a tip credit, um. In terms of of impacts, we did not model a change simply because state law does not currently allow. Um, you know, municipal to do something different, it's always got to be that, but three twenty-one, one per hour uh for forever. In in terms of impacts, um, yes, that for effective business, you know, restaurants, for example, that would. Tend to bring the, um, you know, tipped workers' wages relatively closer to those of non-tipped workers, which has. Uh, you know, all kinds of potential effects, um, not not, but they cannot something we could want to fight.
Great, and then also, um. Second question I had generally is the, um. Unemancipated minors, so, you know, the state legislation, um, you know, applies to all employed adult. employed adult employees and emancipated minors. So I just, I was struggling to find what a sixteen year old, what you're permitted to pay a sixteen year old, and is that in your model? Because we're talking about like, you know, teenagers losing their jobs, but like, I just was struggling to find what a sixteen year old is allowed to be paid.
Yeah, well, that is that is something that Louisville is allowed to, and I know you obviously have legal counsel, but that Louisville is allowed to decide whether to exempt make certain exemptions for the for the minimum wage there. We did not model that as part of a separate scenario for a couple of reasons. One, it's somewhat difficult to identify in the data. The actual number I can tell you with some confidence that about one percent of all workers are under eighteen, a small share of those would be emancipated. But also, it's a relatively small population, and so it's not not a population that we can come up with very precise numbers about. But I don't think that quite answers your question, but.
No, that's okay. Well, I'll try to get more clarity as we move on, but appreciate it.
Other questions?
Thank you. So I want to take a few steps back to make sure that as a council we're all on the same page of specifically what we're trying to solve for here. So I don't know who to direct that question to. I think if you polled us right now, there might be different answers to that question. So I'm wondering what's the ultimate goal? What are we trying to solve for by increasing the minimum wage?
My suggestion, I think that's a good question. I I don't know whether our expert is the right person to answer that question, although we could probably tell you historically what the reason is. I could probably do that too, because I'm an employment lawyer, but I, what I would say is here, it's different than what anybody's done elsewhere necessarily. I mean, we can decide what the point is, if there is. And I guess I would say that it would be good for some of the public comment to cover that, one. And two, that we can talk about that when it gets to council comments, we can have a discussion about that because that's kind of a first first underlying question that we probably ought to address. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? I've got just a couple. You know, we've focused a lot on minimum wage workers. And I may have missed this in the report, but when you're talking about reductions in jobs, are you talking about reductions only in jobs at minimum wage level? Are you talking about production in jobs of all levels in business?
Yeah, it would be all levels and also not something that it's very easy for the the literature does not. It's not easy to separate those effects out there to, you know, you're typically looking at overall conditions, although we would say disproportionately, it's going to be the lower wage, if not minimum wage jobs, but not exclusively.
And the the other question that I have has to do with something that may be outside the scope, but I think something that is maybe gnawing a little bit on me and perhaps others, which is that part of the reason for the practical reason for raising minimum wages is compression and you know, kind of wanting to raise everybody's wages at least close to minimum, but maybe not minimum. Or maybe put differently, that when you raise the minimum wage, everybody expects, or at least some people will expect more wages. That isn't true across the board, but it is a possibility. That's a kind of effect that I don't know. I don't know whether you have any sense of, I don't think it was the focus of the report. But I I have a question, you know, I wonder about that. Do you have a sense of of if not what what your study suggests, what the literature suggests? Is that kind of effect?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And in in general, I mean, the report, the the effects we're reporting in and calculating in the report are meant to be sort of global. When we say job losses, it's to the best of our ability, all all job losses on that regardless of the wage level. And actually, within the model, there is an accounting for the fact that we do expect wages, that sort of wage compression effect. We would expect not just workers at the current minimum wage, but also workers earning a little bit more than that to some of whom will will earn a higher wage. So that is absolutely accounted for in the analysis. I think it's an important dynamic to to keep in mind.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Dietrich? Councilmember Heffner?
Yeah, thank you. Just just building off the mayor's question, it's my understanding that many union contracts are directly tied to the minimum wage by way of a multiplier or something to that effect. Did your analysis include the impact on those union contracts?
Not explicitly, no. And it wouldn't be. I mean, so some of what we're doing is is based on literature of other places to the extent that there are and that's not universal. I mean, there are different levels of union employment and different types of union contracting in different places. To the extent that, you know, other places that informed the research have similar arrangements, it would be captured. You know, it's not going to be exactly the conditions in Louisville or in Colorado. Although I would say
You have an understanding of how those contracts work?
I wouldn't be able to give you any details, but yeah, I mean, clearly, if you're increasing the minimum wage, that has an effect, a ripple. I mean, that's a direct sort of wage compression. I can't speak to the magnitude of the effects, but.
Separate from the compression issue, though, though, are you aware of the notion that many union contracts are directly sort of contractually tied to, you know, the minimum union wage is one and a half times the the legal minimum wage, that sort of thing?
I mean, I've heard of such things, have not analyzed them specifically.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Heffner, your hand is still up. Is that a legacy hand?
Legacy hand, Mayor.
Not a problem. Maybe pushing that a little further. I didn't see any of the charts again. If I missed it, I did. It was a long a long and very detailed report, and that's good. Did you did you inquire about how many, how many unionized workers there are in Louisville?
We did not know. I mean, that was not a dimension that that we were asked to address.
I mean, I don't know whether, I don't know if that's an effect that in Louisville is that significant, but I was just interested for the impact. Why don't we, if there's no more or no other questions, let's take some public comment, please. Do we have folks signed up?
First, first is Beth Eldridge, followed by Alejandra Beatty.
First big clock. Thank you, Council. My name is Beth Eldridge, and I've lived in Boulder County since 2001. I've lived in my small condo in Louisville for nineteen years. I've served our community as a school teacher, a family resources for schools, social work assistant, and a marshal fire disaster case manager. I've always earned well below the area median income and sometimes below the proposed minimum wage. Please increase the Louisville minimum wage over time. Higher compensation empowers workers like me to stay in jobs longer, reduce commute times, access healthcare, and live in safe homes. When my life was turned upside down due to the marshal fire smoke damage in my home, I sought a lower stress job to give me time to tend to my insurance and contractor. At Balfour Assisted Living, I tried to work with seniors, but I was offered less than fifteen dollars an hour. At Boulder Valley School District, I applied for a parent educator job after the marshal fire. Despite having a PhD and almost a decade of experience, I was offered less than twenty dollars an hour with no pay for the numerous school holidays. As a single self-supporting woman in the helping professions, the lack of pay equity has haunted my life. These wages would never pay my bills, much less the medical co-pays for my chronic health issues. It's frustrating that I've contributed so much to my community as a marshal fire recovery navigator and a teacher. Yet my place in this community is precarious due to low wages and high housing costs. Low wages affect many people beyond teenagers, grocery stores, and restaurants. Even Boulder Valley is hiring fewer teachers and struggling to hire enough low wage paras. Funding cuts lead to more unemployed teachers like me. Even when I'm employed, I don't qualify for affordable housing or other programs. Increasing the minimum wage could help people like me come closer to finding safe housing to grow old in. During my nineteen years in Louisville, it's been hard to get by, much less put away money for retirement. My tiny condo with steep, narrow stairs threatens my physical health as I get older. I was told by one county official that I'm just going to have to leave Boulder County. I invite Louisville to rise to the occasion to thank its helping professionals and essential workers by offering more sustainable wages to help us live together. Local voters support raising the minimum wage. Workers need higher wages to save for down payments and to qualify for mortgages. We need to invest in our people. Businesses are better when employees are better and communities are better when everyone matters, when we all have choices, and when we can live together, building on all our strengths and recognizing our contributions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Alejandra Beatty, followed by Peggy Leach.
Hi, everybody. My name is Alejandra Beatty. I am president for the Boulder Area Labor Council. I think I heard a couple of union questions, so I'm like, oh, looks like I probably should make sure I address some of those. So let me very quickly just make sure that I highlight some of the key things that I want to make sure come across. We believe that we need to raise wages across the state. And in the one of the most expensive counties, Boulder County, this is a highlight that we believe really needs to come across. It's one of the great things about the state law. It was designed so that the counties that are more expensive to live in can make their appropriate adjustments for cost of living, while the other counties can stay at the lower state wage. Great, but Boulder hasn't done that yet. And yet, and so we're now we're starting to see wider and wider gaps where now it's starting to make a little bit more economic sense to drive all the way to Timber because they pay nineteen dollars. And I don't want to see workers leave this area. I want to see workers stay here, thrive here, live here. Someday, maybe just be able to have one job because one job should be enough. And that those are the kinds of wages that we want to see. But we also believe that this is an economic benefit. This is going to benefit the local economy and those companies that continue to improve the wages mean those wages then go to the other businesses. So we're not wanting to advocate for, let's shut everybody down. Of course not. We want people to have jobs. So we want these businesses to be around. I love the small businesses. I love coming to Louisville and coming to the the great places. I actually just got a job working for the Boulder County Employee Union. And this is one of the areas that I'm considering moving into because I want to work local, advocate local, and spend local. So I got about a minute left, so let me make sure I get to those union questions. I don't have an exact count of how many union members you have here in Louisville. And generally, my area, I represent about twenty-five hundred families, but that includes Boulder, Brumfield, Gilpin, so a lot of the counties. Honestly, I don't have a lot of union density in this in in this area. It is something that I'm trying to fix because I do believe that as we get good, those good union contracts that we were asking about, that again is going to improve wages. But again, I'm all about improved wages so that we're spending a whole lot less on the rent and we spend it elsewhere. Now, minimum wage is one key piece of the puzzle. It's not everything. We know that we have to fix housing, but think of how much rent would have to be to equate to fourteen dollars and forty-two cents. Nobody is ever going to see rent that low, not in an awesome town like this. And then the last question is, yes, there are some contracts that use minimum wage as the basis. Here in Colorado, it's not actually that common. It is something I'm in trying to encourage people to do. UFCW that supports King Supers, they're one of the one, a good example of somebody who is doing that. Thank you for your time and appreciate your your evaluation. Thanks.
Peggy Leach, followed by Jenny Lavat.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Peggy Leach, and I live at two oh nine South Lincoln Avenue. I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Boulder County, which is a nonpartisan political organization. And we urge the city of Louisville to raise the minimum wage effective this coming January and ideally to join Boulder County in raising the minimum wage to twenty-five dollars an hour over the next five years. Boulder County workers, businesses, and residents in all benefit from a regional approach. It is time to take the first step in a series of incremental increases to close the eight dollar gap between the current minimum wage of fourteen forty-two and the current self-sustainable wage in Boulder County, which is over twenty-two dollars an hour. The longer we don't act, the larger the gap becomes. Let's work to find a workable solution that supports our workers as well as our small businesses. And now I'm going to speak on my own behalf as a former operations manager of a small manufacturer in Brumfield. I retired eight years ago. And I worked there seventeen years. So we always started our workers at about three to four dollars an hour over the minimum wage. And we always did regular increases after that. And this worked out well for everyone. The workers were not forced to scrape by so they could find a decent place to live and afford a vehicle that wasn't always breaking down. For the company, it meant very little turnover and great loyalty from the employees. When we did experience turnover, we realized how costly it was as production quality and quantity both suffered when we had a new employee. We spent hours having to sort through product as the new employee did not yet have an eye for defects. As you study the minimum wage issue tonight and over the next few weeks, I hope you will realize that this effort has been going on for more than two years. And there have been many opportunities for community engagement from businesses, workers, and residents. I think it is time for a decision, and it would really be a shame if nothing is enacted before January as there will then be another year-long delay. I'm also curious about the work of the Consortium of Cities and whether they can come together for a common proposal so we won't have a patchwork of different minimum wages around all over the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jenny Lavat, and I apologize, I can't read your writing. It's looks like N E I G E? Okay.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jenny Lavat. I am a business owner here in the Westville. I own The Singing Cook across the street from City Hall here. I am here tonight with a business perspective as a very small business owner. I employ two people. Third person occasionally. My parents help me, and of course, I'm the primary employee in my business. While I believe that everybody deserves a fair wage, I believe that minimum versus living wage are two separate things. I talk about my first job as a sixteen year old. I scooped ice cream at Baskin Robbins for five twenty-five an hour over by the King Supers here. I would not pay a teenager twenty-five dollars an hour to scoop ice cream. That's not something that is a viable option for many of us who are small businesses who employ either teenagers. Or in my case, my employees are retired. They are people looking for jobs for extra spending money. They're looking for flexible hours and a way just to continue being out in the community without being at home. Most of my employees at this point, I have two, three, they start at over minimum wage in the first place. Around here, trying to employ someone at exactly minimum wage is nearly impossible. I know, after having experienced this in the last few years of having to replace a couple of employees for various reasons that they moved or whatever. Raising minimum wage is all well and good, but it does not solve the multifaceted problem that is the cost of living around here. So in this case, as a business owner, what will happen to me is I will either have to cut hours, or cut employees, or cut my business hours. Or, and in the end, if it goes up to 25, I will no longer be able to raise people's pay as America, as somebody who has been working for me for five or six years. Like, that'll be the maximum I will ever be allowed to pay anybody at this point. Again, the businesses that are gonna be the most impacted by this are the small ones, especially retail and restaurants. We operate on extremely small margins. And I think we can all agree that, in this case, a lot of things have not been factored into this. One for me next year is rent. I expect my rent to go up somewhere between $300 and $500 a month. So I have done some rough numbers. If I were to have to pay somebody, we'll say next year, $25 an hour, which I know is not the case, plus the increase in rent that I'm expecting, I'm going to need about an extra $60,000 worth of sales a year in order to pay myself, pay my employees, keep my store open at the level it is at now, and pay my rent and other expenses that are going on. The way I see this, I've been here for 12 years. If this is my situation, my business will likely close, because I will have to raise prices and pass things on to other people, my consumers, and those people are gonna start buying things elsewhere. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Julie.
After the next speaker is Lydia Ferante Roseberry.
Hey, guys. My name is Najee Larue, and I am the owner and founder of Punch Buggy Shave Ice. We have a shop here on Main Street in Lewisville, one in Lafayette on South Boulder, and I operate a mobile truck that operates all over Boulder County. I'm also a Lewisville resident. I live near Harper Lake. We've been here for 11 years. I feel like there's a real disconnect between this conversation and what it's like to be a small business owner in small-town America. This, to me, feels like just killing the dream, of the American dream, of being a small business owner on Main Street, USA. Since I've opened my business five years ago, we've dealt with COVID. We've dealt with inflation. We've dealt with supply chain issues, price gouging, tax increases, rent increases, and my neighborhood burned down. A whole bunch of people moved away, and a lot of people were relocated. So a decline in population, which has significantly increased, decreased our sales over the last number of years. I feel like what I do, if you guys have ever visited me, I know, maybe, I don't know, some of you have, some of you haven't. I employ teenagers. I'm the place where kids come for their first job. I have employed about 90 teenagers in the last five years, between the ages of 16 to 22. This is often their first job ever, and they don't know what they're doing. They don't know how to make eye contact, interact with strangers. They don't know how to take out the trash. They don't know how to handle a broom, and they come to me for these life skills. And the thought of paying someone to, who's never mopped a floor before, $25 an hour is just completely bonkers to me. As of it now, they are a tipped employee. They make the $11.40 tip, plus the tips that come in. These 16-year-olds with zero work experience are already making between $18 and $22 an hour, because of their tips. So I feel like it doesn't make sense to me that we would have to increase this even more for these kids. And let's be, let's face it, I employ my own daughter as well. She's pretty well taken care of here in Lewisville. She comes home to three warm meals a day, a roof over her head. She has all of her wishes cared for, as many of my employees do, because this is an affluent community, and the teenagers in this town are pretty well cared for. So like wrapping my head around my, you know, 14, 16-year-old kid making $25, $28, $30 an hour, like, please, God, someone, make that make sense to me. It just doesn't. If you look at Slide 7, that's all you need to know. Slide 7 on his presentation was the kids who are under the age of 18 are the ones who are gonna get the major pricing, the major wage increases. And the people who are gonna lose their jobs are the people who are under the age of 24, right? People still living at home with mom and dad. People who are students. People who are still claimed as a dependents, who it's our job to provide for these children. So I don't, I have a hard time understanding how how this makes sense. And I know for myself, I, oh shit, I'm way over. Sorry. I know that this would detrimentally impact my business. I would want to move it outside of wherever this is, or close it down. And I just don't know how this is sustainable for small businesses like mine.
Thanks.
Next up is Lydia Ferante Roseberry, followed by Patrick Walsh.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you very much for taking on this important question. I am a resident of Lewisville. I live over on Fireside Street. I have been a Unitarian Universalist minister in, not in Lewisville, but in this region for the past 16 years. And I'm currently a staff member with Together Colorado, which is part of the coalition that came together for this minimum wage work. And probably most importantly, I'm a mother of two young adult children. I want to start, and I just want to urge you to create the increase, follow the county's line of doing 25 by 2030, for a variety of reasons, for, you know, the, I think Peggy was talking about, just let's have something uniform that goes around the county, so that we're not having workers have, having to travel more, and more people can work locally. As a minister of, over 16 years, I provided a lot of financial assistance to many congregants. So I got a real education in financial insecurity in this area, even including people who you would not expect that, expect that to be. The high cost of living here can topple any family, and you probably all know that. I think it's a moral imperative that we support those who are most economically vulnerable. Many people in my congregation's found themselves in that position, but there, there is a whole group of people in this area that we prefer not to see or don't see that are extremely economically vulnerable. As a mother, I want to share that my daughter and her husband both work in early childhood education in Denver. They earn $22 and $23 respectively, which is above Denver's minimum wage of $18. And even with those wages, they need to live 45 minutes away from their work in a subsidized apartment. And they live a very modest life. I want to see them be able to prosper, and they're doing, and, you know, they've taken on a kind of work that is so important in early childhood education. And I think those workers deserve to be paid well. My son is not likely to go to college. And as a parent, I worry about his capacity to make enough money to become independent. And I want him to have the satisfaction of caring for himself economically. I think that's just a general human right, a physical right that people have, regardless of your educational level, of your capacities, that you should be able to care for yourself economically and independently. There's something very satisfying to someone's self-esteem. And I want to live, as a citizen, I want to live in a community that cares for its lower-wage workers. I understand that some of them are teenagers, but as we heard from the consultant, that's probably less than 1%. I want them to have the satisfaction of becoming economically independent. And also, as a resident of Lewisville who used to live in Oakland, California, I am crying for more diversity in this town. And I know that part of that diversity comes from having wages that people can afford to live here. I also know that the affordability is very complex with all these things, but wages are one factor in a very complex equation of why it's so expensive to live here. I value a diverse community, and I'm, wish Lewisville were.
I'm sorry.
I am overtime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Walsh, followed by Iona Kearney.
Patrick Walsh. I have several businesses in downtown Lewisville, also a resident of downtown Lewisville. I think that we're talking about two different things here, living, a livable wage and, and minimum wage, and they're two dynamically different things. And I think it's a tragedy that we've neglected the fact that the restaurant workers are the largest group that we're talking about here when it comes to minimum wage by a huge number. And the increases that we're talking about are going to be detrimental to the industry. And we're seeing that across the board. We're seeing major changes in the way that restaurants operate. McDonald's is going to an automated system, eliminating employees, and this is a lifestyle thing. It's not just little changes that we're talking about. These are gonna be huge changes, and they are not things that I can sustain as a small business owner. I can't afford to buy a million-dollar robot to, to take your order. They can. And I think this is an intentional isolation of an industry that is at the core of what we're talking about. We are the largest group that we're talking about here. It's not other things. We're not talking about those people that are making $22 an hour that can't afford to live in this community. They're not making minimum wage. What we're talking about is the 60% that was on that slide. 60% are under the age of 18, making minimum wage in our community, not a different community. This is our community. This is what's real. And the impact is gonna be huge. We're talking about dynamic changes in the way that we live, what we have as options in terms of what we can eat, the quality of that food. And if we don't take real solid look at what we're doing and why we're doing it, we're gonna have some major consequences as a result of this. Beyond that, I think that it's, it's a farce, that we're gonna, we're gonna see living wages as a result of an increase in minimum wage. We're not. We're gonna see restaurants like myself, who have to sustain increasing by a magnitude of X. We have to. Otherwise, we go out of business. My margins are 5% to 7%. They're not like other industries. And to put us all into the same bucket and consider us all one thing is a tragedy. And when we're talking about 1% losses on a national level, these are huge numbers. We're talking 1.6 million dollars, or 1.6 million lost employees, of which the majority are minimum wage employees. It's a net loss. It's a huge, huge mistake. And these numbers don't speak anything to the reality of what's going on and who's being affected. So while I absolutely think that it's important that we find a way to bridgegap this and make a living wage for other people that are in other industries, this is a specifically targeted attempt at completely eliminating our industry. So please do not do this. It will, it will completely put me out of business and people like me out of business.
Thanks. I seem to be giving everybody about 22 seconds extra, but, so I'll continue to do that, in fairness. You get 20 seconds extra, too.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members, and of course, city staff. My name is Iona Kearney, and I have the absolute pleasure and joy of operating Spies Broke Car Wash over on Heckla. I had a whole letter prepared tonight to read about the study and how much of an expense labor already is on small business, how I have to raise my prices. I'll leave Lewisville, all that good stuff, but I think you've heard from other businesses, and I don't want to steal their thunder. Honestly, I want to tell you about my day-to-day and about Josh B. Josh B. is one of my current employees. I hired him about three weeks ago. He graduated from Monarch in May, and he worked at Rosati's during high school before he came to work for me. He is currently taking a gap year while he decides what career path he may like to take. So yesterday, we're cleaning cars, and Josh asked me if he could potentially bump his hours up to work four days a week. This was exciting for me. You know, it's a big step in becoming an adult, maybe working full-time. Last night, he texted me and he told me he wasn't feeling too well, but he would let me know in the morning, you know, if he could make his 10 to 6 shift today. This was good, because I had talked to the employees about the importance of letting their manager know the night before if you were feeling sick. I said, "That's fine. I hope you feel better. Let me know in the morning," so I could find coverage if I needed to. Fast forward to this morning. I texted Josh around 9:30, asking how he was feeling, if he was planning on coming in. No response. Texted him again at 11:00. No response. Now, you can understand my frustration, because just yesterday, he had told me that he loved his job and he wanted more hours. So you would think he would want to impress me. But finally, at 1:30, Josh texted me saying, "Sorry, have a fever. All messed up." At this point, it was too late to call anyone else, so I had to stay until 6:00 to help them clean cars, cover Josh's shift instead of going home to shower and change, so I looked presentable for y'all. So my apologies. Now, I tell you, that's not to complain about my job or how hard my life is. This is my favorite part of the job, in fact. I get to take young adults like Josh and teach them how to have a job. I get to take people who are in transitional points in their life, like them at Choice House, for example, and integrate them back into society, a schedule, and having a job. Josh is currently being paid minimum wage, and that is okay, because he's also gained experience on how to have a job and the acceptable behavior. I am working with him now, so that when he goes to get his real estate license, which is what he's decided to do at the moment, maybe he comes to work for Fox or another local, somewhere, somewhere else local in town. He understands the importance of communication and professionalism in the workplace. The people who I'm hiring at minimum wage are looking for experience, not necessarily a paycheck. And they know this. So the only thing the city would be doing by increasing minimum wage is increasing our expenses, adding more of a price burden onto our customers, and potentially denying these employees the experience of having a first job as their hours would have to be cut. The employees I interview and hire at minimum wage are not those who have children or who need to support themselves. The employees I hire are those who, like I said, are in a transitional period in their life or students. Most still live at home with their parents, but who do not fall under the unemancipated minor category, like Josh, who's 18. If an employee decides they like our company so much that they want to be promoted, then they're given a raise. They earn more to begin to pay their rent, support a family, et cetera. If minimum wage increases, all those wages I pay staff at the supervisor or management levels also have to increase. We love having our family-owned business in Lewisville, and currently 40% of our staff is at minimum wage. The cost burden of increasing minimum wage to just meet Colorado's new minimum wage in January 25, whatever that's going to be, is already daunting. Please do not make it worse. This is such a difficult conversation, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Hannah.
Next is Josh Cooperman, followed by Susan Liu.
Josh Cooperman, sorry. I live in Lewisville. So I'm not an economist, but I've tried to inform myself to some extent on this topic. I'm also not a business owner. I'm self-employed. I tutor when I'm not looking after my kids. And I set my own wages for that in consultation with my tuties. Just as a little bit of background. So in any case, I wanted to start out by saying that, generally speaking, I'm supportive of increasing the minimum wage. And, you know, the reason is what is quoted on one of the slides, I guess, number 33, which states, citing the economic literature, that increases in the minimum wage can be an effective way to improve outcomes for low-wage workers, and also that the available evidence indicates that localities can successfully increase the minimum wage without causing great economic harm, but there are important trade-offs to consider. In my remaining couple minutes, what I wanted to do is just offer a couple of perspectives that I've been thinking about myself. So the first perspective is just kind of going back to the idea of minimum wage, right? At some point, we decided that there should be a minimum wage, and I don't think we're getting rid of that idea. So it seems like it makes sense for the minimum wage to track some kind of economic indicators, right, either increasing or decreasing with those indicators. And indeed, right, the state minimum wage does do some kind of tracking. And so we could ask, you know, is that tracking sufficient? And I think there's a pretty good argument that it's maybe not sufficient, because different regions in the state have different costs of living, ours being higher than other parts of the state. So that's, you know, one perspective. A second perspective that I've been thinking about is just basically the idea that, you know, someone could, someone can have a job, and they might work 40 hours a week, right, which is, you know, a typical expectation for a job. And yet, they might not make enough money working a full-time job to support themselves or their family. And the question is, you know, is that okay with us? And clearly, to some extent, it is, because, you know, we don't, right, we don't require that people pay a living wage. And, you know, then again, right, we could ask, well, should they derive all of their income or all of their necessities from their job? And maybe they shouldn't. And indeed, in a lot of cases, we don't just derive our needs from just our employment. So that's one thing I've been thinking about, or another thing I've been thinking about. The last perspective is just that, you know, this seems like a classic, or another classic case of, you know, should the government be stepping in, or should the government not be stepping in? You know, where should we draw that line? And I don't really know. I mean, on the one hand, like, you know, we, the government could I mean, on the one hand, like, you know, we, the government could step in and we could institute a higher minimum wage. And then that directly impacts the businesses because they have to pay more. Or we could not step in, but you know, those people who are now not getting a higher minimum wage still need, you know, some more support from somewhere. And so if that comes from the government.
Your time's up.
We have to get that from somewhere, which maybe is raising taxes on businesses, so I don't.
Thanks, Josh. You got an extra three seconds, Josh, I just wanted you to know. Who's next?
Next is Susan Liu, followed by Mark Overholzer.
Yes, this is Susan Liu, Ward Two. You know, I'm going to jump to the report, which is overwhelmingly positive in its recommendations and really glosses over the negative fallout. You, you, you have to be have your head in the sand to ignore the headlines coming out of California of the raise in wages devastating the fast food industry. The other thing I didn't see in the report, or maybe I missed it. If is they have totally ignored the Harvard Business School study, which shows major damage to low income workers with raises in minimum wage, i.e. people getting their hours cut and increased automation resulting in layoffs. The study says that for every dollar increase in the minimum wage, the average number of hours work decreases for people by twenty point eight percent. And the loss of wages in hourly is thirteen point six. And when that happens, this reduces people's eligibility for healthcare and other benefits because they're working less than the thirty hours. So the other thing I want to say is the reports, you know, say, oh, well, we ought to do what unincorporated Boulder County is doing. I, I don't know how many actual real life low income workers are working in businesses in unincorporated Boulder County. I mean, the bulk, the bulk of the employment is in municipalities, not unincorporated county. So, I mean, we're the ones that really matter. Finally, the thing I want to bring up for you that's not included in the report is the definition of BIPOC includes Asian Americans. And if you look at the statistics in Boulder County, most of the Asian Americans here in Boulder County are in high tech, high paying jobs, especially here in Louisville. And I don't see any indication of that being a factor in how the stats play out in this report. And I think that's something that glosses over the negative fallout from, from raising the minimum wage higher than what the state is doing. So thank you for your time. It's a difficult topic, but you'll be hurting a lot of people if you decide to go the way that Boulder County is going.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is Mark Overholzer.
Thank you, can you hear me? Are you guys there? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. This is Mark Overholzer. I owned Tilt Pinball. I also live in Louisville. First, I wanted to thank Barbara for that question she posed before we went to public comment. I think it's very important for us to, to understand what it is that you guys are trying to solve for. There was a lot of pros and cons in the report. I thought it was a great report that laid out both sides quite well. And there doesn't seem to be a real clear cut answer. So I'd sure like to know what it is that that we're trying to accomplish. Looking at the survey questions, I don't think it was a surprise to anybody that students and wage workers were in favor of a minimum wage increase and business owners were not. What I would encourage you to do is realize that the money that we're talking about here, it's not tax money. This is the business owner's money that you're asking to be given to these workers. So I would hope that you would weigh the business owner's opinions on this a little bit more heavily than the general public. To give you an example, that was one of the things Patrick was getting into. With the tip credit, the minimum wage for a tipped employee is eleven forty. Under the new, if you go up to twenty five, it would be twenty one ninety eight. That would be a ninety three percent increase in my labor costs, which has an enormous impact on how the numbers look in my business. I just thought that was kind of a staggering number that you should keep in mind. If this were to take place, if I were to choose to stay open, I would certainly start looking at other options for staffing with how much staff I have on, so some people would not be working as much. And I'd look at some other technology things, you know, Patrick mentioned the McDonald's thing, which is very expensive, but there are cheaper options for somebody like me. I look at Cap'n Garden, they've got the, the self-serve tap wall. So I might need to start looking at more self-serve type of options or types of events that don't require as much staff if we want to try to be sustainable. So I would just please encourage you to not do this and just stick with the Colorado minimum wage. It's not like the workers don't have any protections. There's a base level of protections in place and I think that's something that we should stick with. I think I've got about a minute and a half left, so maybe I'll sing a song.
Well, you're welcome to do that. I talked a little bit about the First Amendment earlier.
Yeah, that's right.
Really want to do that, you're, you're welcome to do that, but I would discourage it because you've got other people waiting to talk.
All right, thanks very much, guys.
Thanks, who's next?
I don't have anybody else.
Then let's, let's start. First, I just want to say thank you to all of the people involved in this. One, people who participated in the public outreach, which was extensive. I participated in that. I thought it was great. I thought that the, the, I mean, the analysis was, was very useful. Thanks to staff, thanks to city Boulder staff, thank you to, you know, county and to all the municipalities. I, I think this gives us a much better pool of information to be able to draw from as we kind of evaluate this. And I want to thank the people who talked tonight because I, I was furiously taking notes on everybody. Everybody added something slightly different and I really, really appreciate that. I don't, I don't think we say that enough probably, but we really do appreciate your taking that time out to, to come and talk to us and all the people who wrote in too. Let's start with Councilmember Hamilton's question, which is what problem do you think we're trying to solve by either having a minimum wage? Now, we have a minimum wage, so we don't really have to think about that, but the, the raising of the minimum wage. I'll, I'll just say a couple of things about that. I mean, historically, and I have a hard time because I'm an employment lawyer, so I, not a labor lawyer, but an employment lawyer. And I studied this stuff, but you know, back in nineteen thirty eight, when the Fair Labor Standards Act was created, it was because people made squat. I mean, literally, people were working starvation wages. So it, it was a way of, of basically paying people like humans, at least giving them something that was a lot better than, than what they were earning, at least on the low end. Since then, it's, you know, there's, there's a lot of different reasons that have emerged, I think. But part of it is, is some of the things that were talked about tonight. Making sure that, that people have at least some measure of dignity in the work that they do. But these are all kind of theoretical concepts. Maybe having a wage that starting jobs could, you know, starting or kind of early stage workers could take and move up from all those kinds of things. But we're not really dealing with that because we have a state minimum wage. So the question is really why Louisville should be raising its minimum wage? And I think I'm going to ask other people that, but I'm going to ask the, our consultant to answer one question, if it would, which is that I forgot to ask before. And that was, did the data that was used include the non-consortia members, specifically Westminster, Erie, Broomfield in particular, even Orvada? Did, did it, did it stretch wide enough to cover them? Because those are the folks who are potentially with a difference, differentiate, excuse me, a different wage, I think, are, are potentially, we encourage businesses to settle in those communities. And maybe, certainly, the ones that rely on lower wage workers might be tempted to go to those places. If, and I'm interested in whether that was considered specifically. Truly a variation on Councilmember Hefner's question of, of what the scope of the community was that you were looking at. Is he still with us?
I'm not sure if the consultant is still here, we're checking on that.
Yeah, sorry, I can speak to that briefly. So our analysis included only the five municipalities, with the exception that some data are not available specific to those five municipalities.
Mayor, if I may, I will add, so some of the census, when they talk about regional, did expand into some of the areas you're talking about because of those breakouts and I'm sure that Andrew could tell us more about that if you needed to. So just know that some of the regional analysis, when we're using the census data, does expand there. Then I'll also add, I, I think I might have forgotten to mention it, we talked about partner slides, but I do believe Broomfield is pursuing a study on this topic and might have more information in Q one.
Right, but they're this time not in our consortium.
They're not in our consortium.
And they're also a different county and so forth. But I, I just wanted to make sure. And when you say that there was some regional data, I mean, this is, I want to be clear about what we're using as the basis for this.
The basis is the five municipalities, Sanders.
All right. Yeah. Rafi.
I just have a question on, that just came to my mind. Considering the CU building that's going to probably be built in Louisville and their exemption from certain local municipal laws ordinances. Are schools of any level or government institutions exempt from? Or would they be exempt from a higher minimum wage in Louisville? Than, than example of what the state minimum wage is?
I, Andrew can certainly talk to you if there was some analysis there. I don't believe so. For example, I would assume that Louisville as a municipality would be holding to whatever minimum wage council agreed to.
Yeah, my, my understanding of that, Kathleen's not available to us, right? Okay, then I'm not going to run afoul of her. But I think, I think it's correct to say that if you're in the municipality, you pay the wage. Because there have been state issues with the Denver wage being applicable in other communities that have much lower standards of living. And that's a, that's a challenge for those governmental entities that have to, have to pay the higher wage, even those people who are living in other, other areas. So I think it, I think it's going to be applied to anybody who's in Louisville.
Yeah, and so my, I'm going to defer to legal, but my understanding is that, yeah, if you're in Louisville and there's a higher minimum wage, it applies, except that there is a state exemption for work-study and I have no idea whether the university or, you know, other CU or other schools actually take advantage of that. But there is an exemption there.
Thanks. We should have asked you at the outset, said, answer your question. Councilmember Rafi, others? Councilmember Hefner.
Yeah, thanks. If we're moving into the discussion portion. I, I for one, really appreciated all of the public comment from all of the different perspectives. I am mindful of where we put economic vitality on our work plan for this year and specifically the bullet points on retaining and expanding existing businesses as well as attracting new businesses. And I, you know, I worry a great deal about the risks to our cherished small businesses. And, you know, I know, I know the slide deck sort of, I don't know if minimize is the right word, but, you know, tried to show that the small businesses are only twenty five percent. It's a really important twenty five percent. And I think a, a big part of what gives our community its character. And I think that the contributions of those businesses are both economic and non-economic. And I, you know, having come through COVID and all the other challenges we've had over the past few years, I think delivering this kind of policy to our community at a time where we're purporting to champion economic vitality would be a mistake and a misstep. Certainly, I, I'm open to further study and the notion that the minimum wage should increase yearly with inflation at some reasonable amount. But I, at least from where I sit, a, a big change isn't what I'm looking for tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Hefner.
Mayor Pretten. So, yeah, it's interesting coming at this from a lot of different angles, the obvious one, city council. I also have a sixteen year old that works at Zuka, she's actually working tonight. She makes minimum wage plus a shared tip pool. I am one of the owners of Old Friends and we employ hourly workers who's similar to Sarah, they're retired for the most part and, and working for the enjoyment of being out and working and they make more than minimum wage. I also own Fox Property Management that doesn't have anyone on hourly wage, they're on salary. But some of our youngest, we actually did the paperwork for some today, who started their job at thirty six thousand dollars a year, which is roughly like eighteen dollars an hour, so not hugely above minimum wage. No experience, twenty years old, no college degree, first day of work and thirty six K. We also pay retirement and insurance and mileage reimbursement and things like that. So I come at this from a lot of different perspectives, like how would this affect Fox Property Management? How this affect old friends? How this affect my daughter? How this affect my community, right? And thinking about it in a lot of different ways. One of the things that I think is most important is this concept of doing things regionally. And I'm a little concerned with how that actually plays out, right? So I want to be a part of a regional decision and just to like paint a clear picture like, oh, okay, Superior, Lafayette, Boulder, Boulder County Incorporated, Louisville, we're all gonna, I missed one, Erie. Thanks, and I added one, I realized, who's just silent. We're all going to go to sixteen dollars next year and seventeen yet next, eighteen the next, and we're all going to do it together. Love that idea. And yet what I don't understand or don't see in front of us is any sort of option to sign on to an agreement that is only like in relation to the others around us, an actual regional agreement. So instead, we're doing this like, well, what are you going to do? What are we going to do? Who's going to do what, when? And are we going to do more or less? And to not be able to do it together is really frustrating. And that I think breaks the whole thing for me, right? And so when you think of, you know, now having, you know, several places in several places, well, if they all happen at the same time, you don't have a competitive disadvantage necessarily or want to move from one jurisdiction to another because it's happening everywhere and customers are going to understand that and it's a little bit more regional, not necessarily all good, not that all the problems go away. But at least it's an even playing field and, you know, I said, the owner of Mud Rocks in the back here, you know, if we, if every restaurant has to go through what he has to go through, then, you know, maybe, maybe it doesn't have quite as big of a harm. But I was there the other day for Broncos and there got to be twenty employees in front of them. I mean, it's just so many people and, you know, eight dollars an hour times twenty people, a hundred and sixty bucks an hour, times eight hours, times three hundred and sixty five days. You're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, which can only be. you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, which can only be, you can only get that back with increased prices, right? And so, and I, and, you know, that's, so it's difficult. For me, the major issue I have is the constraint that's been put on us with tip workers. And I don't understand it, because in reading it, you know, it's 11:40 an hour, only if you pay at least $3.02 an hour in tips. So it's basically guaranteeing them at least minimum wage. I don't understand why that can't like, yeah, and it's still 11:40 an hour, but only if you can guarantee $8 an hour in tips, $10 an hour in tips. As the minimum wage increases, their tipped wage must stick with that minimum wage at the very least. And if it's more, that's great. But we don't have, we have not been given the ability to mess with, mess with the tipped credit, which for me really hinders my, I, I would love to see us go to 25, like, let's go, let's get it done. But it has to have a carve-out for tipped employees in restaurants. I don't understand how, how we can expect restaurants to double, I mean, as, as, I think as Mark put it, I mean, doubling their labor costs over the next five years. How on earth are they going to stay in business? I don't understand it. And again, my daughter makes way more than minimum wage while she makes minimum wage. It's not real, like, she doesn't make minimum wage. And so she's not the one who needs an increase, let's pretend she's 20. She's not the one who needs an increase, because she's getting tips on top of it. So there's just a broken piece to this whole puzzle that I don't understand the way out of. There are two broken pieces, one that I want it to be regional, and we can't act regionally, and two that I wanted to carve out tipped employees, and we're not allowed to do that. So I'm really stuck, because I actually believe very much in a minimum wage increase. I believe very much in minimum wage tracking over time with, with our economy and with the cost of living. So I am a very strong proponent of minimum wage as a thing and as an increase and as we move forward. And yet, I'm really stuck on those two issues. So any other thoughts on those two issues? I don't have like, my, I don't have a clear path forward. I don't have a like, so let's do this. I feel very stuck. So curious what other people think about those pieces.
I, I have other comments, but I, I can address the two. The, the consortium piece or the, the regional piece is right now, it appears sort of everybody is waiting for everybody else. And I don't want to call out the chair of the commissioners, but she's watching here. And, and, and I know that the commissioners are interested in this moving forward. I, I've gotten calls from other mayors of other cities, you know, talking about this and expressing their concerns about the, you know, some are inclined toward it, some are inclined against it. But I think everybody's kind of waiting for everybody else. That doesn't mean we shouldn't act. It just is the way it is. And I'm not sure there's been a, technically, there's been an exploration about having some sort of IGA. I don't even know whether this is even appropriate for an IGA. I, I don't know that it is, but the other, so that one, I'm not sure there's much we can do about it. Each of the municipalities are sort of sovereign to their own interests. And, you know, that's why, that's why there is some problem in this. But I think all of them recognize that, you know, we don't want to sort of create incentives within that group for people to relocate to other towns, at least in those areas that are gonna be most, or the, those businesses that are most affected. The, the second one, I, I think is actually relatively easy, though I'm not sure it's fair, which is, we can carve that out if we wanted to. There's nothing wrong with doing that, I believe. Because frankly, the, the law carves out. I mean, there are, there are plenty of changes that can be made that we could tailor that to. If that were the only problem, I don't think that would stop us.
Sorry, where are you getting information that we can carve out restaurants?
I think.
For tipped workers.
For, for an increase in, for minimum wage? I think we.
But we're, we're not.
I don't, I don't think we're, at least my, that's my understanding, is that we have discretion on that. If we wanted to, I don't know that we're limited by that. All right, well, I'm not going to, that part I'm not going to stand on. If that is indeed what the rule requires, if we have that. Is that your understanding, Sam, too?
Yes, Mayor, that's my understanding.
Okay.
That we do have to provide an offset, equal to the offset provided in the state constitution.
All right. I mean, the state itself has carve-outs, but that's not something we're allowed to do. So.
Forget about that, Caleb.
Just forget I said anything about that. So, you know, I don't know that, that doesn't leave us with, you know, a lot of, a lot of room. I think on the first, you can, you know, you can step out, you can make a decision and be the first, I think, of the consortium to make a decision. And I'm not including Boulder County in that, because they've already made a decision. And I think, at least, my understanding is that Boulder is headed, right, to that. So, anyway. Other, other comments? Yeah. Councilmember Hefner.
Thanks. Yeah, I was just gonna address, I don't think we have flexibility on the, the tip credit. And the, the other thing I would say about that is, you know, I, I don't know the legislative history either, but I'm sure the folks who put that into the constitution had the, the best of intentions in mind in terms of sort of picking a number that they thought made a lot of sense, and then hardcoded it into law. And I hope we all have a, a little more foresight than they did in, in terms of picking numbers out of a hat.
Thanks. Again, I want to go back and I want to get comments from anybody who hasn't spoken first. And I do want to draw you back to the question that came up initially, which I think is a good one, which is, what's the, the reason why we should be doing this? What's the problem there solved? Yeah, Councilmember Curran.
Thank you. I think the idea that we are working on this regionally, I agree with Councilmember Dickinson, is that it makes sense. However, I think Lewisville needs to be more than just part of Boulder County as a region. Our closest partner, Superior, is not participating in this conversation right now. Our next closest to are Lafayette and Broomfield. Broomfield may or may not be addressing this potentially next year, right? And I think that they need to be part of the same conversation if we're talking about regional changes in wages so that it stabilizes the market versus we make a decision that directly impacts almost 50% of the small businesses in this, or says 50% of the businesses in this community are small businesses that pay at that wage lower than $20 an hour, is what the report said. So we're, we're really impacting about half of our small business owners directly, and every restaurant says we can't index the tip credit. I, I just, I have a hard time seeing how we move forward solely independently and ask our business owners to bear COVID, inflation, the fire, and then this, back to back to back, reducing the stability of the, the community. I think we are gonna have reduction in wages or in, in hours of staff. I think as a consumer in this community, it's gonna make it harder for me to enjoy and participate spending my money, because I'm gonna save, I'm gonna have the same amount of money to spend. And so if it goes up, if, if it's costing me $150 at poor instead of 100, I'm going once a month instead of twice. And I don't want to do that. So I think this is a snowball effect, and we're not thinking of necessarily everything. And I gotta tell you, I really worry about people and some of the retired people who are trying to supplement their income. If they can work 20 hours right now to supplement, we pay them a dollar more an hour. And now we're saying, really, sorry, the owner's gonna pick up most of the time, we can only give you 10 hours? Have we helped them? Or are we doing more by taking contributions from the community and taxpayer money, putting it into places where we can help people who are earning $25 an hour or less in helping them in critical areas where they don't have the funds to cover their current expenses versus increasing the minimum wage, especially related to the fact that we can't adjust the tipped. Those are, I just wanted to bring all of it up with all of you, just, those are, those are the things that I hear. Those are the concerns that I see, that I feel. And again, not bringing Broomfield into the conversation with Lewisville, Lafayette, Superior, I think is not the smart move for us to make.
Councilmember Hallington. The only one who has contributed so far, but I bet you have thoughts.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So the reason why I asked my original question, what are we trying to solve for, is because I was trying to wrap my brain around what the problem statement is in order to help find a solution to that problem statement. I believe in part what we're trying to solve for, based on the conversation tonight, is the cost of living in Boulder County and our region as a whole. And so my next question would be, who's responsible for a solution to that problem statement? And even more, if, if the cost of living is a regional problem, then I think even more, it makes a regional approach to this topic all the more important if we do decide to move forward in any way with increasing the minimum wage. I, like Councilmember Hefner, do have concerns about our small businesses in our community. We, we hear from many residents that that is something that they value. And I, I'm worried that that uniqueness that we hold so dear could be disrupted if we do go down a path that isn't regional and mindful of the uniqueness of that economy that we value here. So I'm uncertain tonight exactly what direction to go in besides having more conversation with the region if the problem we're trying to solve for is a regional problem. That's why I asked that original question. It was truly coming from a place of curiosity to establish what we're trying to solve.
I appreciate that. I, so two questions. I know we have a county commissioner in the audience as well who might be able to answer, but is there, can Boulder County create a minimum wage for all of Boulder County, not Boulder County Incorporated? So I'm seeing a very confident head shake now. Okay. But we do, so, not a nod, but a shake. But we do have this odd sentence here that 10% of jurisdictions across the state may adopt a minimum wage ordinance higher than the state. And an IGA covering several municipalities is considered one in that calculation. That to me reads, we could absolutely form an IGA of several municipalities that could all at one time create a minimum wage. That is not something we can do from this dais right here. But I think, you know, for me, that's the best path forward. And I know that's also probably the hardest path forward in some way. I mean, to get, you know, multiple municipalities to agree all at one time to the same thing seems very daunting. However, that's, I mean, I would, I would, for me, this is obviously just me speaking, I'd like immediately sign on to, I'll do what you do. Right? And then we're starting to talk about what is it that you'll do that we'll do, like, you know, and the chances that the four municipalities around us want to do something drastically different than what we want to do is unlikely. But if they did, and we did it with them, at least we'd all be doing it at the same time. If they all did nothing, we would do nothing with them at the same time. But it's pretty easy for me, conceptually, to sign on to Lewisville is ready to play ball with the rest of you and do the same thing you do, what say you? And then you're getting in the conversation. But again, that's not something we can accomplish tonight. That's a dynamic that we need to create. And that would be the direction I'd want to be heading. And so that's a little bit more complicated version of what you just said of, of trying to work with our neighbors to, to head in that same direction, since the county can't do it. And since if we move on our own, we can't know what anyone else will do. But doing nothing, because again, you get the statewide, you know, minimum wage that works for some very rural areas, potentially with very low cost of living, that's fine. I can understand why the state regionally can't get to where we may need to get here in Boulder County. So I get why, why we can't rely on the state to do it for us. We can't rely on the county to do it for us. So what region can we rely on to do it with us at the same time? But it probably should be higher than the state minimum wage, but maybe not the highest or the most aspirational. And then certainly, just last thing would be, I, I, from a business perspective, gradual is better, like, jumping and then smoothing is really painful, as opposed to, okay, I know exactly what's gonna happen over the next 10 years, and we're gonna get that target, that's less beneficial, obviously, for the employee, potentially. But I think that's a more realistic way to not put people out of business. So I think that's probably, I'm done for today on my comments, but I might surprise you.
I, I'll, I'll make my comments now, since I'm the only person that hasn't spoken on this specific issue. But I'll say, I, I agree particularly with the comments of Councilmember Hefner. But I, I think, and I take issue a little bit with starting with the regional approach, because the regional approach assumes that this is something we should do. Right? If we conclude that it's not something we should do, or that we haven't a, an agreeable basis for doing this, that it's our responsibility in terms of what Councilmember Hallington said, that, you know, it's only when we are agreed that we ought to do something more than what the state has agreed to.
The region decided.
Well, that's, that's potentially true, but I, I mean, the concern, and, and maybe, you know, there's always a possibility that, that even if the, the group decided to do nothing, you, a particular party or potential party to the IGA could just say, we're, we're not gonna participate going forward. But I, I think it's important to be, I think it's important to be sort of genuine in our interest and clear about what our purpose is. I think there, I, I'm very certainly affected and, and appreciate the comments of, of those who have, you know, direct experience with the minimum wage and have provided some kind of meat to the bones. And I'm also really appreciative of the small businesses that have provided a little bit of a counterweight to that. Not, I mean, it's not us versus them, and this isn't necessarily a labor versus management sort of thing. But I think there, you know, what I'm, I, I think there's, there's a tension clearly. I am concerned about what we're, what we're saying to small businesses. I'm also thinking about this, this question of, is it our city government's role to be requiring a higher standard than either the state or potentially other neighboring municipalities? Maybe, you know, which we don't know about on the consortium side. And we don't, certainly don't know about on the other parts of the region. So, and I'm also concerned that this is sort of by necessity, a blunderbuss approach. This is the concern that was raised by, and you raised it, but also it's been echoed by several folks that there are, there are categories, there are industries or market sectors that are adversely affected to a greater proportion than others. That is pretty clear. And that, that bothers me. I'm not sure I agree with Patrick, his earlier comments that it's targeting those, but it effectively targets those, you know, whether it's intentional or not. And that's, that's a concern for me. I don't like any particular policy that. That say our larger businesses in town who pay way more than minimum wage. I mean, they're not, they may not care. In some ways, right? Because they're already paying a lot. They may care if they have worse service. At the restaurant or if they have, you know, if they they aren't getting enough retail options. I don't necessarily buy the idea of we're going to lose a bunch of jobs. I think we're going to have higher costs for the consumers. I think that's. Where it's most likely to be an issue, because I think the costs will get passed on. And that's not good, you know, for business, but it's, and it's not good for low wage workers either. So I'm, I'm struggling with. Whether it's something we as a city should be doing. And I I just am not quite convinced that that's the case. I think when they set the minimum wage at the state level, as some of you know, there were extensive. Extensive comments and testimony and studies and so forth. I'm I'm certain that they didn't land on a number on the number that they have. Because or or at a level that necessarily was, you know. Uh commensurate with what the standard of living is in Boulder County or cost of living. Uh and I'm also sure it wasn't pegged to the cost of living in the San Luis Valley. It was somewhere in the middle because they had to reach a a number and a percentage. But I, that's the part of the this that that I struggle with is that. That is generally speaking. The way we've done minimum wage. For many, many years. I know that we're trying, you know, this effort is to try to recognize that different parts of the state are different. But I'm not sure this approach that we're being, that is being proposed. Um that has so little flexibility. Is the right one. And I'm just concerned about that. Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have a couple of questions. One. Very briefly on the. Said we can't exempt restaurants or. Tipped workers. Can we exempt businesses that have fewer than ten or twenty employees? We can't do that either. Okay. Then the way I see to get the the group together before a decision is made. Is similar to what we did with the round table at our MMA. And everyone at the table has a vote. And if a certain percentage vote no, it doesn't go. If a certain percentage says yes. We all go with that decision. And that would be a way to get all of the communities together at the same time to say. We'll do this and maybe have a discussion about which. Which increase they would want or how gradual they would want it or come to an agreement. Among all of the communities in. How we all want to go forward.
I think my response to that is that that may, that sort of is. Sounds good it on the theoretical level. I think on a practical level, one of the things about the RMMA. Group, the round table, is that we're really dealing with somebody else. It was a question of all the communities coming together. To, I don't want to say against another entity, but at least. Working in a common way to try to achieve some goals. Here we've got an economic issue that. Each community feels really strongly about if, for example, I went to that IGA and, you know. If I'm all fired up about something. And I think that's a good idea, but Boulder doesn't. Either Boulder's going to vote against and or Boulder is going to pull out. And if people pull out, which I think is more likely than voting. When we're not, I I I can't see if we have maybe. A number of the communities, but not all of them, voting in a majority voting one way and a minority voting the other. The minority is not going to say, I don't think. Gee, we're going to be controlled by the these other communities. I just don't see that. I think that's. That's where that that kind of structure I think is likely to break down. I think it's, it poses the kind of, you know, prisoner's dilemma that that Caleb was talking about earlier. Which is, you know, we're all looking at each other, seeing whether what the other is going to do. And then people have not yet made decisions. And. I I think you just have to make a decision one way or another. I think you could, we could propose. To get together with other communities and have a kind of IGA discussion. I I don't, I haven't talked with any. Other mayors pending this discussion or or the county for that matter about it. I I think, though, we have to. First say, what do we want? And that's a separate issue and a and a precursor, a precondition, I think. Before we move on and say, well, let's see what others do. So what what is the consensus around the issue of? What we prefer to do? If anything, on the minimum wage.
Yeah, I mean, my my concern, appreciate that, because my concern is if we end of the meeting right now, I don't know what. I don't think we've given much of a signal to any other community about what we're going to do, right? Um and so we haven't taken a step. And that might be strategically smart not to take a step. But I I would prefer to take a step in the direction of what we're thinking. Obviously, we're not going to sit here and pass a minimum wage ordinance tonight. So, you know, talking about what is. You know, the range of what we're thinking and doing. So I think I come up with three things right now that I'd love a reaction to is. I do not want a large jump. And so type of a percentage or something like that. I do not want a large jump, January first, twenty twenty four. I do not want to be, I say in a more positive, I want to be higher than the state minimum wage. And I want to increase gradually. To 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 be higher than that wage. So the fourth thing would be, once we get to. A number that we think is a good number that then it does is tied to inflationary increase over time. So that it isn't painful each year. So there's four things. You could say three just by not including the first, but a gradual. Increase above state minimum that ends up being tied to inflationary. Uh increase over time. And so that's a little generic. It doesn't have numbers on it. It's not setting a goal of twenty five by thirty or thirty by thirty five. There's no like hard number. But it says I want to be above Denver, sorry, not Denver, above. It could be above Denver, but it's saying I want to be above Colorado and gradual and then tied to inflation.
Um I'm going to push back. I think what we, and the reason, not not in the way that you may think, I mean, I'm not arguing against your proposal. I want to, what we really need to start with is, is the council wanting to establish. A change in the minimum wage or not? That's the first question. If the answer is no, we're done. If the answer is yes, then we've got more questions, which is, you know, we we have a question of. Well, are we comfortable with something and, you know, a number? Uh that we let staff know about, provide that kind of direction. Are we? Do we want to do something different? Do we want to wait to offer a number and for, you know, propose to other people or other communities? That we have, you know, a summit or something like that. But these, but those questions are subsidiary. I want it first, then we've got. Six, five of us here, six. So I think that's the first question. The first question is whether we want as a council, as a community. To raise the minimum wage. Above what the state already provides.
I'm going to give a thumbs up caveat. Can I explain my thumbs up?
Sure.
Yes, if we have partnership, regional partnership.
Right. Others, others.
The reality is, is that today, if we're answering the mayor's question, today in this moment, we don't. So if it is based on the circumstances of today, which is we currently don't have any kind of a regional agreement. Then it's where we'll be. Then the second, I guess, then you could say, well, if we do have a regional agreement, how do you feel? But I think we. Like, based on the mayor's question, I think it makes sense to say, how does Louisville want to act? It's acting independently. Versus how would we want to act if it was going to be identical through the region? I think those are probably because like per you, you have two different feelings on this. Yes, regionally, you would be in favor of doing something, maybe. You know, four percent increase or an eight percent increase initially or something, but not, you know, a full fifteen first year. That's what you're saying. But if it's not going to be regionally, maybe Lafayette does decide that their their small business owners really couldn't handle this. Longmont makes a very similar decision. Superior, we know, is not going to increase, right? They're not even taking this upright yet. So the question would be, if we are on an island within the municipalities, obviously Boulder County, we we already know where they are. What they're going to be increasing to, so we can compare ourselves to that. But that would be the only regional partnership that we could speak to at the moment, I think.
Might, I might modify the question a little bit. Then, because I know that there's some, there's this issue of regionality, right? And maybe the the fundamental question is regardless, uh or even if we had a regional. Discussion. A kind of summit where everybody were a part and the question was maybe, do we have a consort? Do we have a? An IGA on this? If. If we, even if we had that, would you be interested in raising the minimum wage above the state? That that means taking out the regional issue completely. On its own. Regardless of what anybody else does, are you interested in, as a council, raising the minimum wage? Above with the state currently provides? Yes, council member Hefner.
No, I I'm personally not interested. I I don't think a a regional approach. I I don't think our our downtown and small businesses will feel any better. About the situation if we tell them, well, Lafayette is doing it too, and Longmont is doing it too. So it's just tough. For for me, the fundamental concern remains the same. I I I'm sensitive to council member Dickinson's point about going gradually. I my understanding, and it's it's not a. You know, really, really thorough understanding. My understanding is the state minimum wage was sort of increased in some large increments. A few years ago to to catch up and then index to inflation with the notion that, well, we're going to now, you know, we've caught up. And now we're going to go incrementally with inflation and absent something much more compelling than I think the the sort of. Uh what I'll call a mixed review in the packet. I I just don't see the the cause to inflict this kind of pain. On on our small and and other businesses.
Others on that issue? That even even if we take the regional approach out, you would like to increase.
Again, it's it's a. Pause, it's it's a false question like. I would like to increase. I would like all of our neighbors to know that, and I would like them to come with me. And if, and if we get to that regional conversation, telegraphing that we would like to be above the state. And they all say no, then can you guess what I would say? No, no, right? So I'm saying yes. If everyone comes with us. So that's how you start the conversations. Yes, if we're together, and if the answers were not together, then the answer is no. So I I don't, I can't give you a strong yes or no to the question you've asked, but I've made it clear.
I think you've, I think you've answered. I think the answer is is yes onto this question. We'll we'll get to the other part. Trust me, we'll get to the other part. I just want to know whether on the face of it, this is something we want to do.
Can you restate your question?
Yes. Even assuming that there were regional. Agreement or a regional. Yeah, regional agreement. Would you be interested in raising the minimum wage or not?
So you're saying if there were a regional agreement?
Yep.
Would I agree to raising the minimum wage?
Well, then let me. Yeah, no, it's not quite that. It's it's not quite that. It's, and what I'm trying to do is put the regional piece out of the way. I'm asking. We are a community. We're not being asked to decide what everybody else does. We don't know what everybody else does. So maybe what what the better, the the question is, is forget about the other communities. It's like, we'll get to that in a separate question. But do you, sitting here, want for us? To raise the minimum wage?
I think sitting here with us in Louisville with the problem statement we have. I don't believe that raising the minimum wage is the way to address it. I think we can lean into other ways to improve. The cost of living burden in housing and other issues that I think, again, going back to my original question, are the root. Of this problem statement we're trying to solve.
Councilmember Fahey.
I will agree with Council Hamilton. I can't, sitting here tonight, commit to raising the minimum wage without a countywide. Agreement with all the other communities. If it comes to the point where they are willing to cooperate with us and do some kind of IGA or something. I would love to do that, but. Absent everyone else's participation, I think that there are other ways that we can improve the cost of living in Louisville.
That's kind of the same position that council member Dickinson was stating, actually. I mean, it's, if you set that apart, it's, you would, you would under certain conditions, and we'll get, again, I'll get there in a second. We'll get there in a second, council member.
We might, we might have an easier answer if we reframed, like if you gave us both options. If everyone does it, would you do it? If everyone didn't do it, would you do it? And that then we can be clear, like if no one does it, I'm a no, actually.
I think that's, I think everybody doing it is only one. Issue. Trust, trust me on this. Well, let's go down this road just a little bit longer, council member.
My, my first statement was probably long and confusing. I I think that council member Hamilton. Probably stated the most effective comment tonight, which is, why are we increasing the minimum wage? We, it sounds to me like what we are trying to do is help members of the community. Who are not dependents in someone else's household to have a higher. Income to improve their standard of living and or. Help offset the the burden of the cost of living in Louisville. And I think if what we're trying to do is say, we're trying to help with affordability. I don't think that asking our small businesses. Should do that. When, what was the number? Like almost sixty percent of the employees that they're employing are under the age of twenty four? That are making those that low wage. Sixty nine percent. Um, thank you. I I think that that's a, that's a really heavy lift from. And to your point, Mayor, it's not the large businesses in this community that we depend. and to your point, Mayor, it's not the large businesses in this community that we depend on, that the community, you know, partners with, that are going to be as heavily impacted. It is going to be the small business owner in Louisville that is directly impacted by this. And I think I would like to find better ways to help the residents. I mean, ideas of cutting utility costs and housing issues and addressing this differently than having an increased minimum wage.
Now, I think what we have, if, this is my, my understanding of the consensus. I mean, I, my, my answer is, is no. There are two councilmembers who've said strongly, yes, if there's a regional agreement. Is that correct? That's Councilmember Dickinson, that's, or Mayor Protem, Councilmember Fay, all right. Because I think we can, we can talk i- if, if you want about some kind of regional IGA or whatnot, but I don't think, you know, if, if we don't have a majority of council right now that wants to change the minimum wage, I don't know where that gets us. So, I mean, I think the direction is that that's not a place that we're willing to go. And let's take a break. Maybe before we do that, are you, do you understand the direction? One, one other thing that I didn't raise or mention before. I think it is absolutely important for us to know how the other communities are processing this. I think that's worth knowing. They may have something to teach us. Regardless of how we vote on this, and so, uh, the fact that we decide and we give direction one way, does not mean we don't care about the regional partners. We absolutely care about the regional partners. And it's why it's important to decide whether we want to address it at all. Because if we go to a regional meeting, at least as of tonight, we would say, we don't want to do this. And you don't need an IGA to say you don't want to do something. But we'll find out what other communities are doing and, uh, you know, if there's a groundswell, think about revisiting, but right now, I think we're, we're at a consensus, or at least a rough, rough, we're at a divided consensus, there are not even a consensus. We're headed divided four to two. All right. Next is discussion direction on communications, and we have staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to kick us off and then hand this over to our first ever communications manager, Grace. So I want to highlight a couple of things. This is an exciting conversation for us tonight. Communications is crucial to a city, engaging your residents, sharing information, making sure people are educated, know what, what's happening, and telling our story. The city of Louisville does so many amazing things, and it's important that we get our stories out there. We've got a great staff, and historically, our communications team has been highly decentralized across our organization. So about six months ago, we repurposed a position to create our first communications manager position. One of the things we tasked this person with, Grace, who's going to be doing our presentation tonight, is to help build some more collaboration and consistency and help us move forward on some of those things we want to improve on as we keep looking at our communications and telling our story and engaging our residents. We know there are always areas for improvement, and it's exciting. Something that I've talked about with many people is change takes time, it takes effort, and it takes intentionality. Some of what we're doing tonight is talking about what our priorities are to make sure that we are all on the same page and council agrees with these priorities. And that'll help us as we go back into the organization and continue implementing changes. So with that, I've spoken enough on this topic, and I'll hand it over to Grace.
Thank you.
Just one moment, please. We are trying to pull up the presentation.
Where's Mark to sing a song when we need him?
Mark's still on the phone? Because if not, I think Councilmember Hamilton would like to serve.
Bear with us if you're listening online. We'll get that PowerPoint up in just a minute here.
Okay. Awesome. I think we're ready to go here. Um, so thank you, Samo, for the introduction, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Just want to say thank you for the time today. We kind of, we've had a lot of changes here, even in my six months here, as you know. And so we just kind of wanted to get back to basics about what does communications do? What are our priorities? How do we make decisions? Talk a little bit about community engagement, just because we have had a lot of change here. So, um, can you go to the agenda? Um, we are covering a lot of information, should be relatively painless compared to your last discussion. So, um, we broke it up into two parts, so we'll talk about communication specifically at first, and then community engagement. A little bit about our team, so as you know, this is a new role here. I've appreciated all of your patience the past six months, just knowing that Rome isn't built in a day. And, um, you know, we're, we're still figuring out challenges and opportunities here as often as we can. Derek Cossin is our senior communication specialist. He's been here a number of years. Really just want to give him a shout out because he held on the fort for like six months doing everything by himself, and he did a really good job. Um, he accomplished a lot as a communications team, as one of one. We also on our team have Brian, Ryan Brown, who a lot of you may have seen probably, but may not have met. But he is responsible for streaming, broadcasting, recording all of our city council meetings, planning commission, um, historical preservation committee. So he does all of that. He also manages our Channel Eight. And then we've also transitioned him a little bit into helping with some videography work, more that side of things where he's traditionally just stayed in this room in the past, so. Um. So, um, that is our, our CMO, I guess, communications team. We also have people within different departments that touch communications. I would say Parks, Recreation, Open Space and Trails is the only other department that has a full-time dedicated communications person. Cultural Services and Police each have a staff member that does communication, but it's just part of their job. It's not all of their job. And then we have a number of people with like five to 10% sign communications responsibilities in a bunch of different divisions and departments. The departments here in the bottom, Public Works, IT, Finance, HR, City Clerk, Recovery and Resilience, all of these divisions and departments do not have dedicated resources for communication support. So we spend a lot of our time supporting those departments and divisions. Okay, so, um, this may seem really basic, but, um, our biggest priority is to communicate information to our stakeholders. This is truly our core service. Nothing else that we want to do beyond that works unless we do that well. So we, when we say we're trying to communicate information to our stakeholders, we're talking about accurate, consistent, timely information and making sure it's accessible for everyone. Um, and those, all those departments that I mentioned earlier, and actually every department, it's, it's kind of our job internally to take their information and decode it for the public and distill it into a way that makes sense for people, something that's effective, a message that is actually going to impact people. So example of this is Tyler in Engineering says, hey, Grace, we have this sanitary sewer replacement project. Here's all this information about it. And I go, great, why should we care? Why should people care? What are the impacts to the public? Who is it impacting exactly how? So that's what we kind of do is we take that highly technical information. We ask the questions to get to the point so that we can bring it to the public. In that example, you know, we're like, why is it happening? Where are we trying to reach? Why should they care? And the final message was Lincoln Avenue is going to be reduced to one lane. This is going to impact school drop off because it's happening right when school's starting. Great. Now we have that message from this highly. Great. Now we have that message from this highly technical project information that we got. And we have some direction to say, okay, who is this going to impact? And then we can decide the channels that we use to reach those people. Okay, so, um, these, all these, we hear like communications, public relations, promotion, advertising, marketing, like kind of used hand in hand. They are very different things, but they're all tools that we use to communicate. I like to think of communications as facts and impacts. So we're doing a vocal alerts test on October 23rd. Here is what to expect. Where advertising, marketing, promotion, whatever you want to call that piece is, hey, the city is doing a vocal alert test on October 23rd and we need you to take this action. We need you to sign up prior to that. Public Relations is a third party, a trusted source, telling the story for you. So that's daily camera saying, hey, the city is doing a vocal alert test. It's usually in the form of a story. So there's more, going to be more context. But they're taking information that we're, we're giving them as another way to inform the public. Really got to move to my slides. Thank you. So yes, we do all of the communication things, all the, we reply to press really, you know, press inquiries. We do graphic design stuff. We coordinate print materials. We manage the city website, all the things that you would think communications does. We also do a lot of other random things. Like we notify Public Works when the flags need to be at half staff. We help with special projects like regional minimum wage. We manage all the translation services for all the departments. So there's a lot of other things that we do in addition to like planning board meetings example into like in addition to traditional communication things. Okay, so as far as our communication channels, we know that everyone has their preferred way of getting information. So that varies widely based on the demographic. And so we utilize a multi-channel approach when we're trying to reach our audience. When we choose what platform that we want to use, we're thinking about our audience. We're thinking about what is the best way to reach the target audience? How far reaching are the impacts of the message? So we're really choosing our platforms based on the audience and the information that we're trying to get out there. I'll use vocal alerts again. For vocal alerts, that impacts everyone. That impacts all of our residents, that test. And so we're going to use everything we've got. We're going to use all of our channels. We're trying to reach all of these different demographics. So we're just, we're going to use it all. For our volunteer appreciation event, that's a closed event. It's for our volunteers. We're not going to post that on social media. We're not going to post that on our website. We're going to send them a direct email and ask them to register. So that's just one example of how we make decisions about what channels that we use. We'll get into a little bit each of these channels and challenges and opportunities with these. But first I want to go over the community survey results. So I think you saw a little bit of this in the presentation from Polco. We did ask, and this is a question that we asked in 2020. How often are you using these information sources and then how, what is the quality that you would rate each of these? So this one, they were given the option for always frequently, sometimes and never. So these are the percentage of people who chose always frequently or sometimes. No surprise, the quarterly community update newsletter, which we are rebranding because frankly, it's a mouthful and it gets confused with our monthly newsletter. But that is what is mailed directly to every household in Louisville. So that's still our number one source of information. I will say a lot of municipalities have gotten rid of these type of printed newsletters, but this is a great example of why this is something that we, we really need. It's the best way for us to get information in front of people. Followed closely by word of mouth for a small town. I, I thought that was interesting just to pull out, but it does make sense. We, we are a relatively small town. So. And then Louisville website, utility bill inserts and e-newsletter. As far as the quality of each one. So they were able to rate them. So these are the ones that were rated excellent, good or fair. As you can see, we have the community update still, number one, followed by monthly e-newsletters, the city website, utility bill inserts and email notices. This also shows trends compared to 2020. So you can see that the quality has gone down for a few of these categories. The ones within our control being, well, kind of in our control would be our email notices for sure, but attending or watching a city council meeting. And then they pulled together this nice little graph for us. So you probably saw something similar to this with some other information in the community survey, but this kind of shows the quality versus the frequency of use. Within our, our sphere of influence as a communications division in that bottom left quadrant is our engagement site and our social media. So these are where we're going to kind of focus energy because we want to bring the quality of those up. They are being utilized. The engagement site less so, but social media is being frequently used, but their quality is lower. Where in that right corner, those are still, that's telling us those are still our, our best methods for getting information in front of our stakeholders.
Curious if social media is us, our social media, or they're saying like word of mouth, they get information about the city through social media, which is a really poor quality way to get it. But that's not that we're doing a poor job on social media. It's just that they're identifying, yeah, I heard about it on Facebook and I don't trust that site at all. Right? Can we really, can we improve that? I guess is my question.
Yeah, I, I think that there's probably some truth there, but there's also some opportunity for us to improve how we're using social media. I think we can do, do better as far as utilizing our channels. We'll talk a little bit about like consolidation and that sort of thing, but I think you're right. Because some people might associate like oh, oh, two, seven with this is, you know, there's city information here and that's the city's information. So yeah. Okay, so, um, these are, are kind of our priority areas for the rest of the year and into 2025. Like I said earlier, we are trying to get back to basics and refocus on, on these kind of what I think of as our core services. So informing and educating, building trust and engaging. These are these broader priority areas where we're focusing our energy. If I, you know, we believe that if we can't get to a place of confidence in these areas, all our other efforts and things, really cool things that we want to do are futile. You know, we, these all kind of build off of each other. So we can't work on the building trust piece without doing really well at informing and educating. And we can't work on the engagement piece without first building that trust. So they do kind of work hand in hand. So this first priority area, which is inform and educate, seems very straightforward, very simple. However, there are some things internally that we need to do to do this well and provide consistent and timely information. Both of these kind of tactics, tactics under this objective here are related to kind of getting everyone organizationally on the same page. We are one team, but we do have a lot of people touching communications and we haven't really had formalized processes for our internal staff on how we manage that. We, we also want to make it easier for our internal customers, like those other departments that rely on us to communicate, to utilize us as a resource. We want to make it easy for them to get the information to us so that we can then get it out to the community. And then we're working on ways, like I said, internally to collaborate more. We want to ensure that we're saying the same thing across all of our channels and we do have different people in different channels. So we're just working on collaboration and making sure that we don't have contradictory messaging. This is especially important during, you know, crisis communications that we're all on the same page. Okay, um, so this other piece, so centralizing information and reducing the noise is our other objective within this priority area. Got to go on a little tangent here regarding the city website. So that first bullet is drive traffic to the city website for more information. That is something that we should be doing as a municipality. A municipal website should really be the number one source of information for stakeholders. They should be able to go there first, find what they need or the resource to connect them to what they need. We should be utilizing all the other channels that we have to drive traffic to the website, to a landing page for information. So that said, how many people love, raise your hand if you love the city website? Nothing. So we recognize that our city website is not functioning well for anyone, frankly. Our community, us as staff, it's very cumbersome. That's a big, pretty immediate objective of ours is to improve the city website. We did make a budget request to implement a new website CMS. So the website was a new website CMS was implemented in 2014. There was, and sorry, CMS is a content management system. So it's like the backend that we use to manage content. So there was a new one in 2014. There was a refresh of the website in 2019, but same CMS. So the problem, it, it didn't really solve the problem. So that's really what our budget request is for, is to implement an actual new city website that's functional for everyone, especially our end users. It's the one that we're on now actually isn't really supported by the vendor anymore. So that makes it hard. So we hope that's approved. In the meantime, we're, we're working to clean up wherever we can. So we're trying to get rid of, we're, we're working interdepartmentally with all of our communications leads and all the different departments and divisions to say, hey, like, get rid of old information, like make sure the information that you do have up is accurate and still relevant. We have a lot of pages just living, living with, but don't need to be there anymore and make the navigation harder to use. So that is my tangent on the website. We, we also recognize that, oh, sorry. We'll have a break pretty soon for questions. Okay. So we also recognize that we have a lot of channels that we use to communicate. A lot more than I've seen most cities have. So we are, you know, one things that we started to do like probably three to four months ago was analysis of our, all of our social media channels, all of our platforms, everything that we use to communicate and look at how they're working. Are they effective? What is the time spent on all of these things so that we can consolidate where it makes sense? We've also launched GovDelivery. So, um, this was actually, we actually technically had GovDelivery before, but this is the like full product. So we just had a website integration before we were like calendar, things were sent out, but that's all. So as part of this process, we reduced our number of email lists that people can subscribe to from 48 to 20. I would say that majority of those lists were not being used. So they were just people subscribed and never getting anything from certain categories. Like there was one called airport news, like that's not relevant anymore. So we, we try to consolidate them in a way that makes sense. We also on the signup page on our website, which I was going to show, but I could do that at the end. There's a, there's a description next to each topic. So there's all the 20 topics. And then there's a little description that says exactly what type of information you can expect to get from this topic that you're subscribing to. I've also automatically enrolled all of you in every single one, just so you know. If you're like, why am I getting all of this all of a sudden? That was me. So you were forcefully enrolled into everything, but you can go into your account and update your subscriptions whenever you want. Yeah. So, um, uh, okay. So the, yep, analysis of the number of channels that we use to communicate. We also are, you know, something that is kind of our job is to train our audience to know where and how to find information. This comes with consistency in messaging. When people are subscribed to the city news topic on GovDelivery and they get the vocal alerts test information, they're going to expect that they'll be getting updates like that. When they hear about something going on, they'll be like, maybe I got an email about that that I didn't see and they can go back. So it's, it's really just like consistency and over and over again, repeating messaging to make sure that people know where to go to find information. Okay, so this, this last objective here, oh no, yeah, okay. The last objective here in this, we're still in inform and educate is to ensure information is accessible for everyone. One of the thing, big things that we're working on is complying with digital accessibility laws. So in 2021, an accessibility law was passed, digital accessibility, I should say, in the state legislature that requires state and local governments to comply with their Office of Information Technologies Accessibility Standards. So obviously we're working to do that, one, because we have to and two, because it's the right thing to do. This is really just about making sure that everyone has access to the same information regardless of disability. So this is a big lift. We're supposed to be in compliance in July. So we were supposed to be in compliance in July 2024. We technically are, we're working toward compliance interdepartmentally. But we have a grace period up until July 2025. Obviously, if we do have a new website, this will make a lot of this a lot easier. Because a lot of these newer platforms just are built for this type of thing, but that's a big project that we're working on citywide. And we also plan to eventually expand these accessibility standards for our social media channels as well. So that's having all text for images, that sort of thing. That's not something that we're doing yet as a city. So kind of contradictory to what I said in the previous slide about, you know, training people to, I'm still on the other one. So a little contradictory to what I said in the last slide of like, we need to train our audience. We also need to understand that normal people who aren't deeply involved in local government aren't seeking out our information. They're not like going out of their way and they're dated and be like, what's the city up to? So it's our job to meet people where they are and get creative about how we get information in front of them, especially for these like high impact projects where we really do need everyone to know about them. Okay. And then this, the second, we're moving on to our second priority, priority area, which is building trust. So, so, so first thing here is telling our story and we hear, we hear this a lot internally is like, we need to tell our story. We need to talk about what we're doing. People just don't know. And I think a lot of that comes with internal relationship building on our part for communications and making sure we have really strong relationships with our department heads, with our staff, because they're just doing their job. They sometimes don't know that like, hey, this is a really cool thing that you're doing or this is an accomplishment or, you know, like they, they don't know. So it's, it's important to have that relationship so that they think, oh, like maybe Grace and Derek would want to know about this. Like we're doing this thing. Let's share this. Also just collaborating and sharing, like doing some information sharing with our local partners, with our neighboring municipalities. That's really important is making sure that we're doing that cross promotion with them. And then of course, building relationships with our local media. And then I talked about earlier, but a lot of storytelling now is through video. We haven't done a ton of video here, but it's something that we would like to do more of. So we are utilizing Ryan's videography skills to do more of that sort of work. And then another big part of building trust is improving transparency. This is kind of built into everything that we do, but just being very honest about what we're doing, why we're doing it, how we make decisions is, is really important as well as like doing the education piece. So like working on like mini local government 101. Like how does your local government work? How is your water treated? Like wherever we can educate about what we're doing as a local government, we try to. And like that behind the scenes. And like that behind the scenes helps with the transparency piece. We also need to be transparent about the experience that we're selling here. So what we're telling people about, hey, this event is going to be awesome. It's going to be family friendly. Ecotoper Fest is amazing. When they show up to that event, what we're selling should match that. Like we should be very honest about the experiences that we're, we're selling to people. Even with customer service, we say, hey, Louisville has an amazing staff and planning, like they're very helpful and kind. They should, that experience should match up when they come here in person. So that, that also lends to the building trust and transparency piece. Okay. We're going to take a little breather, see if anyone has any questions before we move into engagement.
So I was just looking for clarification. Actually, you were talking about, and I think it's already started unfortunately, but is trying to funnel people to the website with emails. Do we want to hold off on that until we actually do have a website that can function and be helpful before we keep, we start sending people there? Because I think we're going to actually do a disservice to the entire project if we're sending people there going to links and it's more challenging than helpful at this point.
Awesome point. I will say that what we've started doing is we're not just saying, go to the website for more information and just sending them off on a wild goose chase because that would just be rude, honestly. What we're doing is we're utilizing short links. So for example, Boko Alerts, we have a forward slash Boko Alert and we're sending people directly to landing pages. So that we're not saying, go to the resilience website. We're saying, here's a link directly to the page for more information. I do something that serves a purpose because we're trying to get people's attention so fast on social media, on emails, everything. We're just trying to get them to click the button to learn more. Like that's the goal is to, they're getting the highlights, they're getting the headlines right away. And then they're going to a place with a lot more context and information that they need or want.
I, I share this because this is actually what has been shared from residents with me so far is that they are actually within even the last couple of weeks. It is good that they're going directly to where the information should be, or probably is somewhere embedded in where you've sent them. But it's that, it's not, it still lacks the clarity of what I know you're really going for. And it's, it is by having it there, it is almost having the opposite effect, unfortunately. And I think you, like sometimes it's better to do nothing. And then to try and be like, oh, we're going to make it better though. I mean, like this is the just first step. Don't like have people sit through the sausage making, just let them enjoy it when it's done. And I think that might be like as we approve some of the pages and you know that they're ready, then that goes, but I'm concerned that we take it too fast. Cause I, I love what's been happening. I personally, like I get them to my personal email and I use friends as guinea pigs. I'm like, so friends who are not like always clicking like, so was it easy? Did you find that? And the most recent one, it was like, and I wanted to bring this up too, the twenty topics to choose from with email. Overwhelming. And after like reading the first ten, most people went, I'm done. So I just thought I would share that that seems to be a little intense. And could you explain what, what do you, what does it look like when you're expanding videos since I have the time? Since you're with expanding videography. I just wanted to, I was curious to know what that meant other than needing hair and makeup.
So on our social media channels, we have not made good use of the reels or like, you know, TikTok style, like thirty seconds. Here's the video, like, yeah. So, so that's really what we're, we're trying to move toward utilizing that better and, and leveraging resources that we have to do that.
Okay. And I, because I noticed that we actually have a higher percentage of our people that claim, that say that they get their information from the hometown weekly than even through social media. So I was curious to know spending on something like that when we have only about half of the community that utilizes it. I personally, I'm not on social media. I can't even, other than pass the first two links on the city's Facebook page. It blocks me out because I'm, I'm not a Facebook member. So it's actually not a thing that's even available to the public to know. So I'm, I think of like resources and what it's going to take and the kind of time and taxpayer dollars for something that we're impacting fifty percent or less of our community. Just I throw that out there.
Yeah. Thank you for those, those feedback pieces. One thing I'll say, and I'll just advocate is trying to sometimes diversify and broaden our engagement efforts helps us reach more community members than maybe we're reaching right now. So I think we're, we're still going to continue to try some of these things and keep evaluating them, right? We can put a little effort in, see if it's having a payback and then make movements from there.
Thanks, Mayor, and, and thank you for the great presentation. I'm just going to let you all know, I need to drop off. So I'm going to say good night, but thanks all and talk to you soon.
Thanks. Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you. Yes, I also think this is a wonderful presentation and I really like all the advances you've made, especially with the website. One question I have, when you're looking at the community survey results, it says on first page that the daily camera usage went down. And on the next page where it says the quality also went down. In my opinion, being a daily camera reader, the digital version, I don't get the paper. There's nothing in there about Louisville anymore. That's why the quality has gone down because they're not telling us anything about Louisville. If they, we used to have at one point a reporter from the daily camera that would sit in the back row and Lucas Hi. And he would report after every council meeting, there would be an article in the paper about what we talked about, what we decided. We used to be included in the traffic reports and you know, this, this is going to be a cone zone. We're not in there anymore. They have the local news section. It was just a little paragraph or two about things. Never anything about Louisville in there. So if we increased our interaction with the camera, we would also increase their functionality, particularly for seniors or people of an age who still read the newspaper. Because a lot of the seniors don't participate in social media. Cause you just said it.
I have never though.
I know. So, and I stopped participating in Facebook and things when I got on council because I didn't want it out there, what I was doing and thinking and liking or whatever. So anyway, I would just like to see more information in the daily camera for the people who use that as their resource.
Other comments?
The couple of comments that I had was, well, first of all, this is great. I mean, so far this is really helpful. It's really helpful to see what you're doing and how you're doing it and, and the challenges you're running into. Because I know like accessibility is a huge issue. We don't see that as council members and it's really huge and it's been, it's been a big thing with, because I mean, people get sued over this just like they get other disability discrimination suits. And I mean, it's really important. So I think that it's, it's really good from a, from a inclusiveness standpoint. It's huge in my view. So thank you for doing that. On, on building trust, I mean, we may be jumping ahead a little bit. I, I think it's, it's important for us as council members to be able to tell the story too. We have a lot of interactions and we have, I mean, I, I don't know what other people do, but sometimes I have to reach out to staff. That takes time from staff. We recognize that, but sometimes it's like, hey, what are we doing in this? And having that stuff available to us, I think is really important. So it's not just, it isn't just your job, you know, to be doing the communications. We have to do it. I think having those like FAQs, you were kind of sort of talking about things where you could go to a place and learn about it. I think those are wonderful and I would, it would be enormously beneficial to just have that stuff so we can send residents to it, right? And, and we'll know it's right because you're going to make it right. So, and I appreciate the experimentation because I think on stuff like this, it's so difficult to evaluate ROI on communications, advertising, marketing. These are just really hard things and you'll hit on some things and some things won't work. And you know, I think within limits. And I think also the city managers talked in the past about doing like local government 101. And maybe that'll be something that we'll do at some point, but I think having something like that on the website somewhere, it's just, it just demystifies some of this. And the other thing that I'd say is when people get pissed at government, it's because they're not dealing with human beings. They're dealing with the concept of government. And it's nice to humanize the people who are doing this work. I think that's important for them to kind of know who people are, have pictures. I think some of those, some of the video that I've seen on social media is just hilarious. It's really good. And that, I don't know, that just, I think that can be a really positive thing in the community and it might make people a little bit less uncivil. To if they kind of know there's like literally human beings that have to, it's not a faceless bureaucracy. We are very faceful. Yeah. Other, other comments so far? We'll let you go on.
Awesome. Okay. So moving on to engagement. Just a little bit of context for, for why we're talking about this. Community engagement is like typically kind of wound in with communications in most organizations. Bigger organizations may have a community engagement team. But they are very different things. So I, I do want to speak to that a little bit. We fortunately have a very engaged community here already. And I will say that's not the case everywhere. Like that's a special thing. And we, what, what we really need here is just, just a shared approach to how we manage that and make the most of the voices and the different perspectives in our community. So this is kind of coming about because we have a lot of different departments and divisions like doing what we would consider community engagement work, but they're all just kind of doing, doing their thing. And there, there's nothing wrong with that. It's just when you don't have a shared approach, like you, you're not going to build trust with the community. You need to like set expectations about when, why, and how you're going to engage the community. And organizationally, we should all be doing the same thing. We are one city. So. What is community engagement? Like I said, there is a difference between community engagement and communication. So that, that chart we looked at earlier where we were talking about the different forms of communications, that's one way. That's informing the community of something. Community engagement is, is a feedback loop. It's a two-way conversation. We're asking for input. Hey, community, we want to know what you think about this. They say, hey, this is what we think about it. We go back to them and say, hey, this is how your input that you gave us about this thing impacted the decision that we made. So whatever level that is at, when you're asking to do community engagement, that's what you're asking for is we, we need to have, it's, it's an invitation to the public to participate in a decision at some level. A defined level ideally, right? So I also will say that public participation is another word for this. This is my, I just, I use community engagement. Public participation is interchangeable here. And the other thing is, you know, real community engagement, it requires a plan and strategy behind it. So that's where, you know, a shared approach to this could really help us a lot. So why should we? Why should we do community engagement at all? We could just, you know, rely on the regular public process and people could share their public comments and we could just do that and that would be easy and great, right? But it's, for one thing, it's, it's a good thing to do. It builds trust with the community when it's done well and it leads to sustainable decisions. So you know, we think about sustainable decisions in this little chart here. They're economically viable, they're technically feasible, they're environmentally compatible and they're publicly acceptable. So community engagement work can help you get to a sustainable decision through public acceptance and understanding of the decision. It also helps us to identify critical problems early because we're getting, when we're doing it right, we're getting a lot of different perspectives that we don't typically hear from. So we have like the same, you know, maybe twenty people that have public comment on certain topics, but community engagement, when done well, you're, you're really reaching a diverse audience and getting perspectives that you might not have heard, which can lead, lead to like early problem solving around decision making. And also it's like, we're, we're educating people in the process. So they feel like they're being taken along on the decision and they're not hearing about it after the decision's made. Until, you know, like, wait, what do you mean? I didn't hear anything about this. What's going on after it's already made and it's done? They're hearing about it very early on and understanding it, even if we can't accept public input at the level that they would prefer, at least they understand it and know about it. So when to engage? Oh, sorry. My slides are in different order somehow. Okay. So a little bit about approaches to engagement. IAP two is, is the International Association of Public Participation. It is the like global gold standard for public participation or community engagement planning. It's what we can, we can utilize to structure our community engagement efforts. The, kind of the first part of IAP two is at the very beginning determining where we can realistically engage the public. So all the way on the left here, you have inform, which I actually wouldn't really consider engagement because like we said, that's just communications. We're just telling people about a thing. And then all the way on the right, you have empower, which is like true direct democracy. Like it's the highest level of impact that a person can have. It's a voting essentially. So typically community engagement efforts live somewhere between consult and involve realistically. And this is important because with, we need to decide before we start engaging the community, what our promise to the public is. Everyone needs to be on the same page about what, what are we going to do with this information? What are we going to, what can you expect from this throughout this whole process? So this is kind of the first part is like, hey, are we at the consult level? Yes. Okay. Great. Now we can move forward and plan the actual community engagement efforts and how we want to collect input. So before we even get there, we need to talk about when we should actually engage and we shouldn't engage or start planning active community engagement activities until we can confidently answer all these questions. So is there a decision to be made? Do we as a, as a municipality have the authority to make this decision? How much influence can the public have on this decision realistically? And then what are we going to do with the input that we receive? How will we use it and how will it impact the decision? On the flip side of this is when not to engage. Kind of a hot take, but sometimes doing community engagement work can do a lot more harm than good. When it's not done well, it breaks down the trust with our community because we're asking them, hey, we want your input. We have no follow-up. We don't, we're not able to tell them what's going to happen with their input. Why should they participate? Honestly? Why should they participate? Honestly, like my biggest pet peeve is like someone, you know, government organization or otherwise is like, hey, take this 10 minute survey. It's really important. Then they never tell me what happens with the information. I never get the, the loop closing action at the end to say, hey, like this was the result of your input. So we shouldn't, we really shouldn't be asking people for input if they, if we can't, if they don't actually have any influence on the decision. We can be honest about that. We can say we're not engaging you because there isn't an opportunity here for you to provide input that will be impactful on the decision. Example, we're talking about ADUs right now, accessory dwelling units. We're talking with planning about, hey, we want to do community engagement. What does that look like? Well, we shouldn't ask people, do you want ADUs in Louisville? Because it's out of our control. The state mandated that we have to have ADUs in single-family dwelling units. We have to allow them. So if we ask the community, do you want them? And they say no overwhelmingly, well, too bad. It's out of our control. We don't have local influence there. So that's a good example of like, we shouldn't be asking that question because it sets an expectation that we do have an opportunity to influence it. On the flip side, we can ask people the things that we do have control over. Hey, should we have parking requirements for ADUs? What size of ADUs are, should we have in Louisville? We can identify those areas where we do have control as municipality and get their input and be very honest about how we use that input. Okay, so how to engage? Sorry, my slides are a little out of order here. So this, I kind of went over a little bit of this already, but we need these four things for community engagement planning. We need to be very considerate and strategic about all of these things. We, we need to be committed to it and we need to be committed to doing it well and doing it right. And getting, so that we do get a diverse audience. We get a lot of different perspectives. We aren't, you know, just saying, you know, if we have just one mode for people to show up at this one event, this one time, we're not removing barriers for people that have to work, that have kids, that have other things going on. We, okay, at 3:00 PM show up and this is your only time. We need to figure out ways to pair that with, you can also take this online. There are also, you know, there's an opportunity at 6:00 PM as well. So removing barriers for people and that all goes with strategically planning our community engagement with having very clear goals, having a very clear promise to the public. So, yeah, okay, um, so this isn't easy. This is a big lift. Um, we obviously don't have a community engagement department. We don't have a community engagement position. However, we have some things in place already that make this a little bit easier as far as getting something together. What we really need like for success in this area is a formalized community engagement framework. So it's the living guide that we are all on board with as an organization that guides us on how, when, why, and how we engage the community. And is just a, a starting point to help make the decisions around things like this. We don't have anything, like I said, that's consistent throughout the organization right now. So that sort of framework or guide is really where we could benefit from something that's formalized. What we do have is trained IAP two professionals. So I talked about the IAP two spectrum of engagement earlier. We have multiple people on staff that are familiar with that. They have buy-in. I'm one of those people. So we, we have people that really understand this and can assist with the development of a community engagement framework. We have, you know, buy-in internally. I think there's a, a big desire amongst all of our departments for some sort of guidance and standards on these things. We also have a community engagement platform, which was like very like forward thinking for somebody in the past. I'm not sure who, but we have this really great platform that we can utilize for engagement. Do you think it's being underutilized right now? It's kind of, it's being managed by a lot of different departments. So, you know, going hand in hand with a framework, like we already have this great tool to make this happen. We obviously have energy around this, like I said. What we need is buy-in and alignment with you all. We really like, a lot of the reason that we're having this conversation right now is just, just to talk about like, does this align with like your vision for community engagement? Like, does this make sense to you? Would you support moving forward with the development of a community engagement framework? Internally, that's really why we're here. That would also come with training. We would need internal training. We would need training with council as well. In the future, we would need dedicated resources, like a framework is something that we can pull together now with the resources that we have. We don't have a ton of barriers to doing that right now. But in the future, to continue to do this work well, like you really do need people that are trained in this area. It especially helps with like people that are trained in facilitation and mediation. When you start to get into like these really, really controversial topics that can be really uncomfortable for people. People that have that background and training really help in those situations and they can also train other staff on facilitation techniques. So, so that's kind of where we're at. I'm gonna put a pin in that for now, but that's kind of our ask is like, you know, does this align with you? With what you're thinking? Um, and I just have two more slides and then we can get into discussion. So kind of going back to like everything we've talked about tonight. Expectations have changed a lot even since COVID around communications and how people want to get information presented to them, how they expect it to from their local governments, their access to you all, like there's a different level of expectation. Just in the past five years. They expect more transparency from us. They expect us to be honest about everything that we can and like, not just honest, like we will be honest, but like being honest as in presenting that information to them. They also expect us to use emerging technology in, in ways that we haven't before. You know, before COVID, most councils didn't even stream their city council meetings, like most of them. So that's just an expectation. Now people know that they can come here in person, they can watch it online, they can watch it afterward on YouTube. They have that expectation already. So I just say all that to say that we have to constantly adapt and we have to constantly have these conversations and talk about, like, look at our strategies for how we're communicating with people and adapt to some needs of specifically our community and what they want and need from us. A lot of you have asked how you can help with communication stuff, um, you and the public. So this is just a few ways. Obviously, share our messages, repost our social media things that you see. We don't have access to those like closed Facebook groups that I know a lot of our residents use. So like reposting in those, I know that can be treading dangerous waters, but you know, she just posting in there, that does help bolster our messaging. Forward emails, forward emails to us, tell people to sign up for e-notifications. That's really, we're trying to push all of our departments to utilize the heck out of e-notifications because it is effective and we need to utilize it better. So tell people to sign up for those. And then also tell us what you're hearing. You do this already and it, it is really helpful for us to hear your experience, what our stakeholders are, stakeholders are experiencing with our messaging, with our platforms, like all the things, we, we do want to know those things. And then we talked about this earlier, but practice ability, um, especially online. I don't think I have to tell you all this, but there are trolls and they live to troll you. So don't engage with them. Um, our rule of thumb, uh, just as far as managing our social media is we don't respond to comments unless there is an opportunity to educate or to point people to resources. So we're not going to engage with people that are just bullying. So we definitely, you should do the same if you can. Um, and like tell people to call us directly too. Sometimes when you're dealing with incivility, like, just like you said, talking to a real person on the phone really helps de-escalate things. And then when you are seeing things online that you're like, I think this is misinformation. I don't really know if this is true. Like send it to us and ask us to clarify. We're happy to do that. And then stay connected is our new, um, landing page for e-notifications and e-newsletters. All of our social media channels, we updated that. So that's where we are trying to get people to go. That is all I have, I think.
Thanks. Um, do we have any questions? I don't want to have too much discussion right now because I want to take public comment and then we'll come back to the, to the discussion. Cause I think council probably is going to have a few things. Any questions?
Phenomenal presentation and amazing amount of work that has been done in such a short amount of time. So on one of your slides towards the end, you were just talking about dive, reaching a diverse audience. Um, and so one of my action items as a council member I gave myself was to try and engage or re-engage in some instances, our young working families in the community. You, you gave the example of like childcare during a meeting and stuff. So are there ways in which we are partnering with our BVSD community here in Louisville to try to pull those folks into all this great work that you're doing to re-engage them?
Yeah. So as far as like specifically engagement stuff, not yet. But we are working with, like, we're building our relationship with BVSD as a whole to make sure we're, we're actually trying to navigate their process for like the best way to promote things that does, that impacts that demographic. So if, you know, we have certain things, we try to send it to them and say, hey, can you help us figure out the best way to get this in front of people? So we've been working on that specifically for things like the Boko Alert test, like we want to get it in front of them too. So that's definitely somewhere we're, we're working toward is more of a relationship there. But yeah, we, we definitely try to get that like important information to them as, as often as we can and ask them to do what they think would be most appropriate as their communications team to get it to their audience.
Phenomenal. Thank you.
You know, to follow that up, apart from the BVSD community, because that's obviously important. I think TM families also, you know, this nonprofits, I think are a good, you know, it seemed like, are you, are you doing any partnering with them? And, and are you doing partnering either within our city government with economic vitality?
Yeah. So that's what I was going to mention because that, that Vanessa and Economic Vitality really has those relationships. But Vanessa is part of our like core, like leads communications team. We meet bi-weekly. So we talk very frequently about cross-promotion and like, are we, are we reaching nonprofits? Are we reaching our businesses? What information that we're putting out is most relevant to those groups?
Great. Councilmember Faye.
I'll expand on that and say also with, uh, like the DBA and the Chamber of Commerce and those places. Also the senior center to maybe have somebody explain how to get signed up for Boko Alerts? Or even to check the email or the website?
Yeah, we actually just had an event specifically for what you're talking about, specifically for vocal alerts for the test. Someone there physically to actually like physically help people. And I think we have another one upcoming. So yeah, definitely.
Well, you could also partner with the police department who is also doing a lot of informative things for neighborhoods, um, trying to get the community watch programs going and things that could be really helpful also.
Other questions or clarifications? Yes, councilor.
Thank you. Hit the wrong button. Um, I'll repeat what everybody said. I was just writing to the end. Yeah. Good presentation, but even more importantly, really good job so far. I think we have just desperately needed your help. So I appreciate like the work and the movement forward. Couple of questions. You were talking about the Louisville Gov Stay Connected. Are we doing anything to like, I guess, get the word out or we campaign? I mean, like, are we going to make a banner and put it strategically? You know, I see this in other cities and I learn a lot of information. I'm always like, hmm, I never see that in Louisville.
Yeah, that's, we just started, like we, we just finally got to a place where we're confident asking people to sign up because it was a new platform. There are a lot of little things that always tend to happen. So we wanted to work out all the kinks first, but we are working on doing all the things to get traffic to sign up for e-notifications through that Stay Connected page. That will look like a lot and it will honestly be something that we do, you know, every few months where we do another push for this and another push for this because people are moving here, people are leaving here. We want to make sure that we're capturing everyone we can.
Grace, how many sign-ups did we have after your push today?
So we had, yeah, we, okay, the last time I checked was just like three hours after the email went out. We had, we only had 120 new subscribers, but we haven't promoted other than this email that went out to existing subscribers. So that means they're getting the word out themselves. Um, and then we had 3,500 updates to accounts. So people either signing up for one of the new topics or removing themselves from an old list. So like some sort of change to their subscription, which is huge. I was like blown away. That was within like three hours. So that went out to all of our, almost, it was almost 50,000 subscribers on our platform. We lost about 200 as well, but, um, that's bound to happen because we haven't done this like outreach to this group and like many people that were in those weird topics that weren't getting notifications are probably like, I don't even live here anymore. I don't want to, I don't want this information. So that's, that's going to shift and change and yeah.
And did I see two different emails? But like one, I'm sorry. One was, um, that came from like the city from you. But there was another one that said the exact same thing, but it came from the rec center.
Yeah. So that came from a conversation about the rec center. A lot of the reps, rec center users and, um, the rec center manager had concerns about it coming from the city. Because apparently they have a lot of people that, um, think that we're like selling their lists and don't associate the city with the rec center or sorry, the other way around. Don't associate the rec center with the city of Louisville. So they're really just like, I go to the rec center. I don't care about what else the city is doing, which is fine. But that was kind of the worry there from the rec center was that if it was an email that came from the city that people would think that we're like selling their information. However, that's another area for improvement where we need to tell our story more. And some of that consistency in communication will help with that to, so that people know the rec center is the city, the library is the city. Like those are really great facilities that we have that sometimes people don't associate with the city. So, yeah.
Yeah, I love the, the updated like emails with the pictures of the city on it. And just it, it's just so much better and easier to read and clearer. And I'm looking for even more of that, which would be so nice. I, I had mentioned this to city manager Fox the other day was it would, like, when I look at an email and I don't know what email list I'm on, especially if I'm signed up for multiple things. I mean, this was, maybe this is just me not wanting clarity, but I went, oh, well, did this, did this come from recovery resilience specific? Was this like an all-city was, because sometimes if it is something we want the whole city to know about. Let's say Excel Energy does another planned outage and we don't want to miss anyone. So you're only signed up for library notifications. We still want you to know what's like, what's happening. And I think that rolls into like any of those kind of emergency things. We experienced this before where the rec center sent out a notice about power outages before the city was able to put an organized message out. And it was disastrous for this community to have that happen. And because it was accurate but incomplete and just come on, right? So as long as, I mean, it's, it's great that we have additional communication partners. And I think especially specifically with the police department having that. But I think a lot of people have started to kind of talk about this and say, you know, can we make sure that everybody in the whole city gets the same message at the same time from the same source? You know, so that it's, that's the consistency. And I think more so than like, oh, you know, the, the street fair, that's great information. It's emergency information, but I really appreciate you guys working so hard to, to create that one really reliable source. one really reliable source. And I just, what I'd love us to be able to do is is give that confidence to our residents that they now know that will come from the city of Louisville anytime there is something and it, you know, they they know that they can rely on it. If it comes through, they should be looking at it.
Are there other questions? Okay, we'll get to the conversation in just a little bit, but I had one question, which is what is the status of text? Alerts, because not text alerts, text communication. We've talked a lot about email and e-notification and frankly, I'm not as interested personally in that, but I I'm not going to comment on that right now. I just want to know where we're at. Because I've been asking through this for two and a half years.
Yeah, so with Gov Delivery, we do have the ability to send text messages. However, we have 50,000 subscribers. So we are limited on the amount of texts that we can send out, which is why we've limited text capabilities to one topic, which is the city news slash important updates topic. So we're while we're doing this education and like promotion of of e-notifications, we're really, really going to push people to that one. Because while we would send emails out in an emergency or, you know, a crisis situation to everyone, that to the people who are opting in themselves for that text, like those are the people that are going to get the texts is only if they're subscribed for that topic. We also don't want to get people confused and think that we're going to send emergency alerts through this. And I I just like kicked myself for saying that just now. Because we we don't want people to confuse BOCO alerts with our notification or text system. So that said, we do have some limitations for text messaging ability through Gov Delivery. And that's right now simply because we have a huge list of subscribers. So if we turned it on for every single category, we may end up with 50,000 tech subscribers as well. And then that really limits us on how often we can send out those texts.
We can comment more on that when we have a discussion. Let's take a public comment, three minutes for public comment. If you have somebody, there is nobody in the council chambers right now. But if anybody online can point to another person online that agrees to cede their time, then a person can talk up to six minutes. You don't have to talk the whole three minutes or six minutes and
I do have someone, two?
Two people?
I have one, Tanya Samaro.
Okay.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Louisville resident. I totally wholeheartedly agree with your mission to improve communications in Louisville and your efforts. I really only have a little feedback about things that are around resilience, preparedness and crisis communications. So I'm a little concerned that some of the communications that have come out of the resilience department, particularly in preparedness. I want to say those communications are really important to rebuild the community trust in the city after a huge swath of residents had a chaotic at best and terrifying and worst experience escaping the Marshall Fire. I think these communications around preparedness deserve to be treated with a special amount of reverence by the staff. And I have expressed various channels that I've seen some consistent problems with. For example, terms of you, terms of you, terms of art being used incorrectly, like for example, recently, communication went out about debris removal and open space. Debris removal a- at the FEMA level, at the state level, at the at the county level. Everybody uses that term to talk about scooping and dumping houses. So it's not open space mitigation, like that's mixing up terms. Another thing I've seen a lot is the words preparedness and resilience and mitigation being mixed up really badly. In the most important quarterly newsletter, a a communication went out about wildfire preparedness. I sent feedback about this, but it's still posted on the website and not corrected. You know, it says home mitigation measures include installing smoke alarms. Okay, that's not a house mitigation measure. But, you know, it's true, everyone should have one, but but it's not a home mitigation measure and it's not the most important thing you want to mention about wildfires because we just had a lot of houses burned and nobody's fire alarm went off at all. Nobody is absolutely nobody is because the smoke was outside your house. There's also a lot of misleading information, like it says landscaping, plant fire resistant plants. That's not the top recommendation. The top recommendation is defensible space. That's misleading. Another place there's really incomplete information. It talks about figure out how to manually open your garage door and there's a huge grammatical error here. And it's, it doesn't explain, there's a red pole cord, like you could have explained. So I feel like the communications are improving, but they have a ways to go. And the reason I bring this up, and I'm sure you'll formalize your process and do a better job of that, I hope, is because how are you doing your crisis communications? Like these preparedness communications are really akin to public safety messages that the Louisville Police Department puts out. And then in that case, they're put out by Scott Moore, who's a public information officer. And his communications are excellent. They're very careful. They're succinct. They're always full of correct information. And I'm sorry, was that a two-minute timer or a three-minute timer?
It was three, Tanya.
Okay.
That's it.
So I'm concerned when I see that, that I feel like are you prepared to do crisis communications? I just spent time with residents talking to BVSD about their crisis communications. And I was just stunned by how much effort and thought they put into it and what a big complicated thing it is. It's a very specialized area. I hope.
Tanya, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to cut you off because you're over the limit by about 22 seconds, which is kind of what I'm, what I'm generally giving people today. So if there's other stuff, please, please get ahold of one of us or or Sama. But thank you. Others, anybody else? Okay. All right. Let's with the time we have remaining, I mean, I'm conscious that it's 9:58, but I appreciate and I think we all appreciate how much you've done in this. It's just the Councilmember Hamilton said, it's just an enormous amount of work. And this, I mean, it makes me want to go and just kind of keep this in a special place so that I can refer back to it because it's a lot of good frameworks here, right, for all of us. Are there, if you have some kind of comment on on one or another of the topics that have been raised? We can, we can talk about it now. Anybody want to? Yeah, Councilmember Fay.
I have one question. Oh, first I'll say, agree with everyone else. This was a wonderful report, very complete. Love what you've done so far. My question is, one of the comments in there was, what can we do? What can we do to help you progress in this effort?
I'm I'm trying to think of a, a good way to say this. I mean, I think primarily just continuing to support us and like understand our our growing pains a little bit. While we're trying to bring more like strategy and thoughtfulness to our communication. I, you've all been extremely supportive and helpful in that already. So just like continuing to support us in that way and like, you know, fighting the good fight as far as like misinformation that's out there, like helping us be proactive about our communication and and things that you see kind of bubbling in the community that are like, hey, like maybe we should address this or, you know, we we do want to hear those things. So I think that's really the best way that you can help us.
So we should bring our information directly to you or to Sama?
Share it through the city manager and the directors.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So communications reports to?
Communications reports to the deputy city manager.
Okay, so that's weird. So it's you too, just so we know, yeah. All right. Other question? Yeah.
I just comment, I just appreciate that we're, what I feel is like getting on the front foot of communications in those kind of one of your sides. But this idea of, you know, not, not just being reactive or hey, this thing happened, let's tell you about it, but this thing's happening or it's going to happen or we want your input or we want to let you know about this thing. And I think, you know, that's one of the biggest complaints as the EVC chair I've heard from, like the business community is like, wait, what happened last night? I didn't, and of course, we have announced it, it's a public meeting, it's in a packet. So there's lots of ways one could have found out. But if you aren't actively looking for it, you tend to miss it. And so being on that front foot of communication and trying to, you know, find these new and fun and exciting ways to engage and inform and and keep people in the know about the things that are coming. So I think that's the the biggest thing. I think I think the city does a pretty admirable job in the time I've been here communicating about what has happened. And it's kind of like the bare minimum of what our community deserves is to have that transparency, know this happened. But we're often late on the, ooh, would you like to be engaged with something that is happening or going to happen in the future? So that's the thing I'm most excited about. And it's, it's just one piece of the puzzle. But again, you know, excited to be a part of the the solution. And I'll make sure I go on social media every day and respond to everything I see about anything.
Yes. Other, yeah, Councilmember Crew?
I actually would like to kind of build on Tanya's, the resident's comment about how we do or what the plan is to handle more of the emergency information. So, you know, do we want to, is this going to be something that does go through like the Police Department's got more so that it is specifically related to that level of professionalism in that kind of communication? Just curious if we could, if we had a plan?
Yeah, I I actually, I meant to talk about it in the presentation because this is something fairly new that we've done. But kind of as a, pretty quickly, when I started, the first outage happened and made it very clear that we needed a crisis communications plan for the same reason you're mentioning. The communication like that can be, can be challenging because we are decentralized. So in an emergency, we needed a plan for everyone who touches communications to follow to be able to centralize the information in exactly the way that you're talking about. So we did work internally on the creation and implementation of a plan. We have used it, I guess, like once now, maybe twice, like light using as far as for the fire, like the fires in Boulder County where that wasn't really our, our thing, but you know, we utilized kind of the the plan that we created as well as the other outages and during the same time. So we haven't had like a great test for it yet.
It'll be clear, we don't want an event to test it. We're planning some training.
Exactly. So what what we are doing though, just to be prepared is we're going to do a functional exercise at the end of the month. I think the 30th, we've invited all the department heads to join us. It's all of the people that would be pulled into what we're calling the crisis communications team. So it's anyone that touches communications that would be pulled into that team. They're going to be partaking in this functional exercise as well as like some other leaderships, so they can see how it works. And that way we can improve from there, just see what needs to change, if anything. But that was kind of built in partnership with, you know, all all the leadership saw it, like it was, it was very much something that we talked about after these events that happened where we're like, this is a priority, like we need this very soon. So that was something we prioritized right away.
Who is on it and who leads it?
Oh, so many people.
That's important for us to know.
Yeah. So who leads it? It depends on who reports in at the time and is a designated PIO of the city. So those people right now are myself, Scott Moore over in PD, Kiana Freeman, our resilience and recovery manager, she could potentially lead it. Ginger Cross over in parks recreation, open space and trails, and then Aaron O- Aaron Owen over in the library. So all these people are the the people that have like more communications duties than any of the other communications leads in the city. So they they are the people that ideally would lead it, but the document is a living document. So it's something that the way we made it is so that any one of these people that touch communications could pick it up and whoever reports in, they would be the designated PIO. Everyone that reports in reports to them. So it's, it's our structure and it's, it's meant so that if I'm gone, if Scott's gone, if anyone, Sama could pick it up and use it. Like it's, it's meant to be useful and not just like, oh, some like vague document that sits on a shelf. Like it's something we actually want to be able to use.
Is Sama a designated PIO?
No, but I mean, well, second, I don't know.
I I would hope so.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's something that you have, that's your call, but I, she was glaringly missing in that list.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there are lots of roles in an incident, right? So one of the things that we try to do is make sure that we've got our communications experts in those point places for the PIO position, because there are lots of other things that your city manager or some of those other leadership positions are doing in concert and collaboration with the communications piece.
Though you're going to get called. I mean, that's what I, you know, you're not going to get calls, you're going to get calls. And that's, that was my concern. But anyway. Other comments about that?
I'm just wondering, continuing on that theme, are we also partnering with someone from the fire department and Boulder County Emergency Services?
Yes. And so this is, you know, we're kind of varying into incident response here a little bit, but depending on what the situation is, yes, we do partner with those things. So if ODM starts up, for example, it's really important that we're all sharing consistent messaging. So our PIO ties into what the Office of Disaster Management is doing and we make sure that we are unified in how we are messaging and approaching and working together.
Other?
Like the good job you guys did in posting about the fireman and also the and they did, it was good job. It got to, I think, everybody that tried to, at least the removal did. So the initial message maybe did not, but it did get updated and and go to everyone. And that to me was a great test of how you guys have made it work.
I I think we, when you talk about we have an engaged community, I think we also have as a sub-part of that very reactive community on certain things. And I I think that's just the, it's our culture right now. People are trained to be reactive and they are really trained by social media to be reactive. And but, you know, in a maybe a bad way, but I think in a, in a good way, people are engaged and they feed back. I I suppose that's going to be a part of your, you know, educating the community, because I think bringing down the concern when somebody doesn't see something or something happens. I mean, I I think Summer's comments earlier were were important on that. I have a couple of points that I want to raise about stuff. I I think one question is, do we need policies from a council standpoint? You guys do your own thing inside. And I'm fine with that, but but do we need any kind of policies? And I'm thinking, I'm not sure this is, this is something for a communications policy, but I do think about how we communicate on particularly controversial issues that we have absolutely no control over in the community. I think of something that that Aaron Brockett, the mayor of Boulder, has said that, you know, for example, in their meetings, they have a rule to that effect. It doesn't, I mean, people can talk about what they want in, in public comments, not on the record, but as far as having, you know, making or having to make commitments to reaching decisions, having, you know, study sessions, whatnot about particular topics, they are limited in that. And it's a, it's an important piece of our communicating with the public because those meetings are one way we communicate with the public. So I I don't know, that's just one kind of policy. I don't know whether we need policies or not. Have you heard about any other communities that have policies related to communications?
Uh, yes, and I, if I understand you correctly, are you talking about specifically like how you communicate things that? Um, like making statements, like taking positions on things that don't impact the city or I, I guess I'm a little confused.
Yes, potentially. Because I think it's difficult. I think the issue we dealt with earlier this evening is one of those. I think we were all, well, I don't say we're all. Fetching around for what to say, but I know some people in council, we were struggling, right? Um, and sometimes good rules can make for good communications. I think also, I mean, maybe the, this is a separate level, but it's sort of like what. It's really norms, I think, uh, between us, like how we deal with our own communications, who responds to what and how. How we let another know and stuff, but I think that's a separate issue. But I, and I don't know whether there are other kinds of policies that are worth having. I think that one. Somewhere is worth maybe a mention in meeting rules perhaps. I mean, maybe that's the answer. And I don't know whether the rest of council thinks that's even a thing that we ought to be talking about. But having a rule that we, we really don't comment or on, on issues that we have. No authority to deal with and are not generally related to what, uh, the city. Is, is doing, that's just a rough articulation of what I'm talking about. And it can help because it means that each of us can refer to that in not addressing things. And the public can know that we're not going to be addressing those things.
Yeah, I think it certainly showed an example of another city that has something similar. I know of some cities who have some rules of engagement or expectations of each other. For how they respond to emails or things like that, because this group has a shared email box, for example, where something goes to all of council. If council is interested in exploring that, that's certainly something we could explore and come back with some more information on.
Is there, is there any interest from, I think, well, maybe I'd ask that question after Councilmember Hamilton rejoins us. But any comment about whether you think there might be a need for something like that or not?
So you're, so what you're asking is, do we think that there should be a limit on public comment on items, not on the agenda?
That's not what I'm saying. That's an area where we really don't have control. What I'm suggesting is really, i- i- it's almost prophylactic. It's to say that we are not as, I don't know, I'm not sure it's communications policy, to be honest. I think it really is, it's really a rule of procedure. So maybe, maybe it's not something we're really talking about, but I, it's, it's the idea that we are not as a council member going to engage. In, I mean, for example, we would all, you know, the norm would be that each of us in our council communications. Generally with the public, whether inside or outside the council chambers. We just wouldn't address issues of the kind that I'm just talking about. That aren't city related and that we have no authority whatsoever to, to deal with. The, the reason why, I mean, that I think is a good, it, it may be a good help for. For each of us when we get asked about those things. I mean, some people will want to know our positions on a lot of things. You know, they want to know your position as a council on certain things. And, you know, having an agreement as among us is great. Having something that the public can see that they know that we're not going to be engaging that can be helpful too. But I, I think it is sort of a, and maybe it's not a, a communication piece. I'm not hearing, one, I'm not hearing. Any great interest in having some kinds of policies for communications for us. But if there is an interest in, you know, however we do that, besides the rules that we have of engagement in the meetings. You know, maybe we need to just maybe the more general question is the one that says. Do we need to make changes to our own meeting rules to address any issues? We don't always deal with the meeting rules every year. I think it frankly would be a good idea to at least revisit them or think about them once a year. In case there are issues that come up, but in a campaign season, in a season, I mean. There are, you know, multiple wars going on in the world right now. And I think we need to help the public understand what we do and what we don't. Yes, Councilmember Faye?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if that would limit us on other comments that we might make from the dais on things like. You know, National Something Day or, pardon? Proclamations, yes, or, or thank yous or congratulations for, you know, someone. A business celebrating an anniversary or something like that.
I, that, those are the kind of things I wouldn't think are an issue. I mean, those are, those are local issues, I think. Proclamations are mostly, you know, when you have a proclamation on people who are seniors, well, we got a lot of seniors there. I mean, that's.
We did a Juneteenth proclamation, which is a national, not a local.
Yeah, and it's not, well, I, again, I don't want to have that discussion here in specific. I mean, we might want to suggest that. To staff at some point, but I, I just think there are, we could probably come up with some language that would help us to do what we need to do. And stay away from what we need to stay away from. That's all. If there's any interest, let me know. But, um, I want to go back to the text piece. I, I, I get that there's a financial, sounds like there's, you know, there's financial limitations based on the number of messages. And Superior's budget is a lot more limited than ours and they do this. I don't know how they do it, but they've been doing it and I've watched it all through. I mean, I started subscribing to their alerts back in. Two thousand twenty-one. And I'm not even a resident and they were fantastic. And they saved the staff enormous amounts of time for not having to respond to things because they were proactive and they were good. And I think increasingly people don't want to receive emails. They, 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 they are better informed and, you know, it's a more, it's just a more. Nimble communication because you can say for more information on this, here's the link. And people say, I don't care about that. Delete. It's a lot easier than an email. And it's a lot more, you know, so I'm not satisfied that it's too expensive. I think, because I think the savings to staff is likely to be enormous and other communities do it. And we're behind on that. So I, that, that strikes me as of all the things that I've seen, I, is the thing that concerns me the most. I don't know whether any other council members are concerned about it or not, but I, I just think we could really improve. Trust and all the things that you were saying before, and you don't have to spend much time on an individual email or a text. Whereas an email takes time. Yeah, Councilmember Crew?
I, I completely agree with you. The, I get the Boulder County alerts via text and. I, I mean, I can't even imagine how many tens of thousands of people must get that Boulder County in, and it's just informational. It's anything that comes up. I'm sure you get them too. Um, and I, I haven't seen the Superior ones, uh, but I do get all of their like email and other notifications. And, um, and they are, they're like, they're always excellent and clear and, um, you know, cramped. But, but my point is going to be with yours that the Boulder County one seems to work really well. And I don't know if they use a different platform that allows for that. If there's, you know, if it's not money, but it's like the source that we're using for the text, maybe. It's more technical, the limitation.
Text is also quicker to respond to. I mean, everybody's got their phone right here, but their computer might not be turned on to email. And so this will go through much quicker to everyone.
Yeah, so, um, here you, I can definitely look into texting and, and turning that on for all of our categories or at least. All the categories excluding maybe the rec center and the library, because those have, those are the majority of our subscribers. They're like huge lists. Um, so we could look at that. As far as Superior does use GovDelivery as well, which is what we've just implemented. Um, they, I talked to Kevin about this because I was like, hey, you have texting turned on for everything. Like, how are you doing this? And he did tell me that they, they do have, they do have a smaller population than us. They don't have a library, like their library users are subscribing to our list. So that's like a lot of it. Um, but they also just have fewer subscribers and they're reaching their threshold. They were told this year with GovDelivery because they've had it a number of years that like, hey, we're going to need to start charging you for this. Let's talk about what this costs. So there is a threshold apparently that they are getting close to annually. Um, like for us, if we turned it on for everything, every time we send a text, it would go to fifty thousand. Where them, it's like a much smaller number when they're doing that. So I think that's how they're able to do it. Definitely can do a little more research. Um, this is just, I know that there was an expectation. I think that when we implemented this, that it would be for everything. So I think it is like a little bit of a surprise. Um, so we'll definitely get some numbers for you, um, just to see what we can do. Yeah, I'll add. So, so we'll turn on some texts and you'll see some texts come through as we're implementing this. If this is the greatest thing since slide spread and we need to do more, we'll bring you what that budget looks like and you all can make that decision as we move forward.
Thanks. And I, I appreciate understanding what the, where the hit is. And I didn't know that, uh, you know, a lot of them are, a lot of those fifty thousand are rec center. We could, you know, I, and I would hope you could differentiate like between some of them perhaps, but I'll, that's, that's your, it's above my pay grade. Uh, anything else about communications? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Thanks, guys.